Good morning, everybody. We'd like to call back to order the Board of Supervisors budget hearings. If we could actually begin with a roll call, please.
Good morning. Supervisor Leopold?
Here.
Coonerty?
Here.
Caput?
Here.
McPherson?
Here.
And Chair Friend.
I am here. We are going to begin with land use and community services today. We have a presentation on the land use and community services budget categories provided under the proposed budget pages 175 to 177. Ms. Mowery, I understand you are going to give the overview.
Yes, I am. Good morning, Chair Friend.
Good morning.
Members of the Board, Christina Mowery, the county budget manager. I'm going to give you a brief overview of the land use and community services budget category before you consider the budgets today. I should get started here. So, the departments, you'll see a listing of them there, range between the agricultural commissioner, all the way to the redevelopment successor agency, parks, planning, public works, library fund, Monterey Bay Area Resources District. And the land use and community services category expenditures are approximately $205 million for the upcoming fiscal year. This represents 26 percent of all county budget expenditures for fiscal year 1819. This is a 3.2 percent decrease over the previous fiscal year. This is primarily from the completion of several housing grants. This chart shows a share of expenditures by department and agency, and you can see here that public works represents about 67 percent of the total. The largest expenditure is services and supplies, which comprises about $103 million. Salaries and benefits of about $56 million support 413 positions, an increase of nine positions from the previous fiscal year. Additional expenditures include about $40 million in other charges, $6 million in fixed assets, and $5.2 million in other financing and contingencies. The land use and community services category revenues are approximately $172 million this year, or 84 percent of total financing, with the general fund and other funds making up the difference, or 16 percent, to meet the expenditure needs. Land use and community services financing represents 30 percent of the total budgeted revenues, and is comprised of 70, almost 80 million in charges for services, 47 million in intergovernmental funds, 32 million in taxes, about, almost 10 million in licenses and permits, 4 million in miscellaneous and use of money, for a total of $172 million. There's about $8 million general fund contribution, and $24.5 million in other funds, which make up the remainder of the financing. This chart shows the share of financing by department and agency, and note that the agricultural extension, Lafco, and the Monterey Bay Area Resources District are not represented as they are totally supported by the general fund, which is shown on the next slide. Public works, we've already discussed, is the largest share of the land use and community services, which is at 73 percent. And here you'll see the general fund contribution by departments, approximately $8 million, which represents about 6 percent of the total general fund net cost, and further details are provided in each of the department budget proposals. Here you can see planning makes up about 28 percent of that, and parks over 50 percent of that total. And then while there are critical unmet needs, such as the completion of Shanna Clear and the farm parks, and deferred maintenance on much of our infrastructure and facilities, we want to acknowledge just a few of the accomplishments of the land use and community services area this year. From the beginning of the storm damage repairs, to the housing unit creation, from completing deferred maintenance on some of our older park facilities, to securing nearly $2.5 million for homelessness programs, from employing new technologies for more efficient work when employees are in the field, to being at the forefront of developing usable alternatives to ban pesticides. Our land use departments continue to work protecting the health, safety, and welfare of Santa Cruz County citizens. The largest of the land use and community service departments will provide presentations on the regular agenda. The status quo budget proposals are included on the consent agenda for the agricultural commissioner, the agricultural cooperative extension, Lafco, library fund, Monterey Bay Area Resources District, and the redevelopment successor agency. Department heads are available today to answer any of your questions.
Thank you for the brief introduction on land use and community services. Supervisor Leopold?
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Mowery, thank you for the presentation. Just had a quick question. In the chart that you showed, it showed 10 percent of the revenues were from redevelopment, and 8 percent of the expenditures were for redevelopment. Is that for the remaining project that we have over on, by the harbor?
Yeah, so that's just the, yes, yes. That's just the small share of redevelopment revenue that's remaining, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions on the presentation? Supervisor Caput?
So, this is covering the whole consent part of the agenda.
Yeah, we can go through, we can look at the consent agenda now, which includes the agricultural commissioner, agricultural extension, Lafco, library fund, the air board, and redevelopment successor agency.
Yeah, so, anyway, yeah, I want to thank you also. And what I've always been interested in, especially South County, is the agricultural commission, because we have so much agriculture. But it's also a fascinating office, because you also have weights and measures, and they have mosquito control. And I've been bringing up every year on the weights and measures. They're the ones like Consumer Affairs. They go out there and they make sure people get what they're paying for, right? So, anyway, my ongoing battle with the big corporations is Skippy Peanut Butter and Jif Peanut Butter. Skippy Peanut Butter, a couple of years ago, took out about an ounce and a half out of what they're selling you, and the, it looks the same on the shelf. So after I said that they were cheating people on that, Jif was the one I was recommending. Well, that was like the kiss of death, because then the following year, just last year, Jif now is taking out two and a half ounces out of their peanut butter, and they're smaller than the jar that's on the shelf for Skippy Peanut Butter. So, anyway, my battle will continue with the big corporations, and maybe, am I correct on this? And I'm sure you're on top of it. Maybe I'll ask the agriculture commissioner.
I just have to say that the Board actually, every year, only looks forward to budget hearings for this one reason. I mean, this is so, every year we get this, and it's amazing to hear about it.
It's a quest.
We learn about peanut butter, and his preference of creamy over crunchy, and amount of ounces, and Juan, I know that this is why you sought this position.
That is correct.
And so, we appreciate you coming forward to speak about the number of ounces in peanut butter right now.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Board. Juan Adalgo, agricultural commissioner, and also sealer of weights and measures. It is true, unfortunately, packaging is shrinking in the marketplace, and we do keep an eye out for that. One of the things that we look for is for slack feel, where you have companies that keep the same size packaging but give you less. So it looks like you're still getting the same amount, but when you open the package, you realize it's a lot less. So one of the things that we look for is to make sure that if you're going to give customers less product, that you also make the packaging to fit that product, so that people can see that you're getting a little bit less. The other thing that companies are doing nowadays is that they keep the price the same, but of course, they give you less. And so that's one of the strategies that industry have been using in the last few years. And we do get complaints like this every once in a while, and so we also work with RDA's office whenever there is a complaint, or there might be an issue with misleading packaging out there in the marketplace. So we work with the RDA's office to kind of follow up on those issues.
What I was interested in was, when I went down to your office in Live Oak area, they were actually measuring, when I was there, juice. 64 ounces, a half a gallon, used to be normal. Now, when you buy Dole's Juice, instead of 64 ounces, it's 59. Is that correct?
That is correct. And actually, that was a case that we followed up, and we worked on our DA, with our DA's on, and they ended up filing a lawsuit against them, and the company paid, because that was a slack feel issue, where they actually kept the container size the same, they didn't adjust it for the, you know, you were getting five ounces less. And so hopefully, that has been solved by now, and these companies are shrinking the size of the package, so that consumers can know that they're getting a little bit less now.
Okay, so now I'm taking on another big corporation, like the Juice, Dole's Juice Corporation now. So, anyway, your staff is only about two on weights and measures. You go around to different stores and check stuff out, right?
We do. So I have two staff, that that's all they do, is weights and measures work, and they check all the scales in the county, any measuring device, all the gas stations, any measuring and weighing device that may be used for commercial purposes, my staff is going to be inspecting. And soon, that's going to include kind of scales at cultivation sites and distribution sites.
You bet. Thanks a lot. And next year, we'll have an update on all this when we have budget hearings.
I'll bring jelly.
Thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Supervisor McPherson?
Yeah, moving right along beyond peanut butter, I'd like to comment on two of the six items that are on the consent agenda, and one is the library fund, to again, thank the voters of Santa Cruz County for approving Measure S, which is a quarter cent sales tax, and then the cooperative effort, the maintenance of effort with the four cities in the county for its operation. We are seeing, beginning to see, the fruition of that measure that was passed in 2014, and I can't tell you how excited in my district the people are. There's improvements to Boulder Creek, and Scotts Valley as well, but especially in Felton, where we have a real special project going on with the library itself, and now an adjacent park that's going to be with it, an interpretive center. It's just a terrific addition to the Santa Rosa Valley, and I know that you would say the same, each of you and your districts, for the improvements that are going on the library. We're going to have a 9,000-foot library compared to today's 1,500-square-foot Vilarity Memorial Building, which will become a historical museum, as a matter of fact. So that's, it's a twofer, but I just wanted to say thank you to the voters of Santa Cruz County. What you did and what you supported, we're carrying through, and some really great improvements are going to occur. So I think each of us could say that about the, maybe send it to Santa Cruz right now. It's a little dicey with what they're going to do, but, and then also on Monterey Bay Area Resources District, I know that some of our Board members, including the Chair, is on that. I want to thank that Board, and Richard Stedman, the CEO, for his efforts to get a grant to, for upgrading wood burning stoves. It's a huge issue in Santa Rosa Valley. The district consistently, for the last several years, has put in $75,000 that it really didn't have extra to spend, to have people trade out, change out those stoves. I think this grant is for $300,000 or $400,000 at least, and it's going to be much more. I just encourage the people of Santa Rosa Valley to participate in this, and you'll get some credits for it, you'll get some revenue for it, if you want to change out your wood stove, which is a serious problem in Santa Rosa Valley. So I want to tip my hat to the Monterey Bay Area Resources District, and thank you very much for that effort.
Thank you, Supervisor McPherson. Supervisor Coonerty?
Yeah, just briefly, on the Monterey Bay Area Resources Board, one of the really cool programs, which is, we're one of the few districts in the country to do this, is we're giving out vouchers for used electric vehicles. So it not only reduces our carbon footprint, but also helps with equity issues in our community, of giving people lower costs, access to alternative fuel cars, and saving them money on gasoline and other costs. And so I'm really proud of that effort. We authorized it, and we're working with the dealers to bring, to get that information out to people.
Thank you, Supervisor Leopold.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to just comment on a couple items on the consent agenda. I want to thank our partners who work in agriculture. We just heard from the agricultural commissioner, and in addition to his peanut butter work, he does all this work supporting our agricultural community, and has done a great job in keeping us informed and the public informed about invasive pests that have come into our community, and the good work that the office does to help prevent the spread of these pests. I really appreciate that and the work of the staff. Agricultural extension, the support that you offer to our farmers is also critically important. The last thing that I'll just say is, the local agency formation commission budget, which is here, is fairly modest, but it's doing important work. In August, we'll be doing a joint meeting with the Central Fire District and the Apples La Silva Fire District, to talk about whether there is efficiencies that can be gained in services, through consolidation of services or possible merger. And that's incredibly important work for our community. It's incredibly important for the taxpayers, and important for public safety. I look forward to that conversation. I appreciate their work.
Mr. Caput?
Yeah, one more thing, actually, on a more serious note. We do have Mark Bolda with us from Ag Extension, and maybe if I could ask a quick question on, we had the methyl bromide before, and the methyl iodide, and finally, that cleared up. And now, what are they doing that's more natural and less dangerous, I guess, to people working in the fields?
Okay. It's actually a longer topic. I know both you and Carlos attended our extension meeting this last February. It's a bit of a heavy lift, you know, methyl bromide had been used since 1960, and now we're looking for alternatives currently. Chlorpicrin's being used, you know, again, it's a gas, lacromogenic, so we're kind of looking, on the other side, you have options such as mustard seed oil. You have some fumigants of lesser toxicity to the environment. Actually, Juan has been working closely with us to make sure that the regulations are being met on that. So, big topic, moving forward on it, there's support, you know, from USDA. I've got a grant from the CDPR, and so if you want any details, let me know.
Yeah, there was something, it looked promising, that rice, a certain type of rice, if you mix it in with the soil.
Ooh, rice bran, yeah. So, okay, yeah, rice bran is, so it's being used as an amendment to the soil, it does change the ecology of the soil, you have different organisms now growing in the soil. I mean, I think if you change a grassland to kind of a redwood forest, the ecological shift that happens there, you're essentially doing the same thing in the soil. When you do that, however, there's some issues with one of the pathogens that we have in strawberries, that we're actually accelerating the growth of that pathogen with something like rice bran. So we need to know, it's more of an integrated approach now that we're taking to these soils than we have before. We need to know what the pathogen is, we need to kind of look at the ecology of the soil. I don't want to lose the board here on these sorts of things, but we're really, you know, looking, people need to really know what they're dealing with. Methyl bromide was just one shot, does it all? That's not the case anymore. A lot more details.
And why this is so important, now we're looking at more natural, more, less danger to the farm workers that are actually working out there in the fields.
That's, that's true, and that's why we're looking at these materials. I will tell you, you referred to corporations before, some of the larger corporations, they see the writing on the wall, too. They're looking at more biologically oriented approaches to pest management as well. So they're trying to replace, you know, their portfolio of organophosphates and carbamates with things essentially that are natural in origin. So there's a big shift, you know, it's just not, you can't just do it one time, you need to test, you need to understand these things, but it's definitely moving in that direction.
You bet. I want to thank you for all the work you're doing, and if the people out there want to call you. It's fascinating to talk with you, because we can go into all kinds of detail about how they're, you know, growing crops, and there is more, it's going towards organic more now than in the past also.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, if you look at, again, one of, Supervisor Coonerty referred to the crop report from 2004 to 2016, there has been, the acreage dedicated to organic agriculture has gone up in Santa Cruz County. So there is that shift, yes.
And the last question, when I talked to you about the bees, you know, people complained, bees are disappearing, and they're very important to pollination, but you were saying that it's actually doing a little better now in Sacramento, in Santa Cruz County?
Yeah, so again, I just hesitate to get into too many details, but yes, the bee colonies have improved, both the domestic and then the wild. For whatever reason, something like 10 years ago, the numbers of bees went down, it could have been a combination of pesticides, could have been a combination of, you know, the forage crops that are around, but the bee situation has improved.
Okay, and I guess related to that, is there still, where the African bee, the South American bee is coming up, and they're more aggressive, and is that, is that dissipated somewhat?
I need to get back to you on that. I do not know the extent of the Africanized bees. I know they are in California, I think they're only in Southern California. I don't think we have them here, but I need to double check for you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah, thanks for your support.
Thank you. I'll just make a couple of brief comments. Also, thank Mr. Adalgo and the Agricultural Commission, and your work in general in balancing enforcement and education, your partnership with the Farm Bureau, your partnership with the growers. I've been to a number of events where you were present, and I think you really do provide a significant voice on behalf of the county to ensure that people have the education, but when it comes necessary, you definitely do the enforcement as well. I think you've brought a lot to that office, and I appreciate your leadership on that. Mr. Bindin, we had a commentary about you when we had the rates about a month ago, but, you know, we don't, we don't get a lot of complaints about issues regarding vector or mosquitoes because of the work that your office does. I know you don't charge very much money, you don't have much staff, but you do an outstanding job keeping our community safe from that. It's really a public health issue, and people don't always appreciate things that they don't have a problem with, right? And since you don't create a problem for people, they don't know to thank you, but the Board does recognize your work. In regards to the library, Ms. Nemitz, you work late nights, and then you come back early mornings, I understand. I appreciate your balance with the city and everything you're trying to do throughout the county. I recognize, as Supervisor McPherson said, Measure S is a remarkable gift from the community. We also know, as costs escalate, that you're doing everything you can to make sure that all of the interests are balanced. Mr. Mojer, you've been a dedicated servant to the libraries unpaid for years, and not just, not just the fifth district, by the way. You've been a strong voice for all libraries throughout the county, and my district appreciates your work as well. Mr. McCormick, we appreciate you coming in. We had a million questions, but we just made up the answers before you got here. I just wanted you to know that. But your budget was cut in half. And on the air, on the air board, a lot was already said by my two colleagues on this, but if you're not familiar with what the Air Resources District does, they actually do a significant amount of work, especially in the unincorporated areas, and on dealing with burns, preventing pollution, and also ensuring, through a number of their innovative granting programs, that we have a lot of options throughout a number of public agencies. They funded electric buses, they funded a lot of electric cars within the fleet here in the county, adaptive signal control projects in the city of Santa Cruz, city of Watsonville, and hopefully, an unincorporated area that can reduce pollution. So it's a very innovative organization that Supervisor Coonerty and I also serve on. We'll open it up to the community, it's an opportunity for members of the community specifically to address us on the consent items. If anybody would like to address us on these items now, it'd be your opportunity.
Good morning again, Chair and Board. Juan Adalgo, Commissioner, I just want to take a minute to thank your Board and the CIO's office for all your support of the agricultural commissioners' programs. And my staff and I look forward to the opportunity to improve our community services, and also to improve our staff development through the county strategic plan. And then lastly, each year has its own unique challenges, both for our growers in our community, and I just want to thank my staff for the dedication in helping our clients navigate to these challenges, to make sure that our programs are successful. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the consent agenda? Okay, we'll bring it back to the Board for action.
I will move the consent agenda.
I have a motion from Supervisor Leopold, and a second from Supervisor McPherson. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you all for your work on that. We will begin, actually, we'll take oral communications, as an opportunity for members of the community to address us on items that are not on today's agenda, but are within the purview of the Board of Supervisors. Would anybody like to address us today on oral communications? All right, seeing none, we'll begin the regular agenda. The first item on the regular agenda, item seven, is to approve the 2018-19 proposed budget for Parks, Open Space, and Cultural Services Department, including any supplemental budget materials as recommended by the CIO. We have the 2017-18 goals and accomplishments, the 1819 proposed budget, supplemental budget, unified fee schedule, continuing agreement list, and the line item detail. Mr. Gaffney? Good morning, and welcome.
Good morning, Chairman, Friend, and fellow Board members. First of all, I wanted to suck up to you guys if I can. Actually, we're passing out a few things. I'm going to require some work from you on this. You're going to have some volunteer caps in here, so that means you actually have to come out and volunteer for the parks. Margaret Ingham's card's in there, she's our volunteer coordinator, so feel free to contact her after this meeting, so you can get some work done. There's also a beach blanket and some sunglasses in there as well, so you guys can use those after you do the volunteer work for us. So, thank you again. We'll be presenting the 1819 proposed budget for Parks, and we'll just get right to it here. We're going to be going over the 2017-18 accomplishments in this, and we're also be doing the 1819 budget overview, the 1819 goals for the upcoming year, and some unmet needs we have or future challenges. So, we also had the opportunity to finish our strategic plan. We're right in the draft phase right now, with the draft copy of our strategic plans out there, and I thought to throw this word cloud out there, this is something that was assembled as a result of some of the public meetings, community meetings, and as is often with the word clouds, the larger words are the ones that came to mind for a lot of people in our community. So these are the things that are, some of our first glance guiding principles for our department. I thought it would be important for everybody to keep that in focus, and it's just a nice, nice way to look at parks, or it's maybe the way my brain works, I haven't figured that out yet exactly. So last year, actually, we were able to finally hire the volunteer coordinator that you guys authorized for us to have, so thank you for that. I wanted to highlight a few things that happened as a result of that. We were able to almost double the number of regular volunteers. These are the folks that come in, whether it's weekly or monthly for us, but they're almost like employees with the department, and they do a lot of things for us. So we went from 90 to 163. In addition to that, we did eight group service days, volunteer workdays, and had well over 300 people come to those workdays. So that's in addition to what we just talked about with the number of regular volunteers. And our volunteer hours, we almost tripled the number of volunteer hours, which equated about $200,000 in value to the county. That's just incredible, because that is more than the cost of the position, and that's just in our first year. So I'm looking forward to that program getting larger and embracing our community even more. A couple of program accomplishments, I think we are all aware that the department had some cuts, and we've had a difficult time recreating programs, because we want to make sure they're sustainable, and that they provide services that are good value for the dollar. But one of the programs that we really are proud to be a part of is the Paharo Valley Girls Initiative, the Girls Paving the Way Program. This is a program where we're supporting the girls from the ages of basically the sixth grade to the ninth grade in that timeframe, and we're going to be with them for three years, and we're going to provide them things like tutorial assistance, college and career exposure, recreational enrichment, mentorship, and leadership. So this is the most vulnerable time for people in our community, at the most vulnerable place in our community, and so it's really a great program. And we're partnering with a number of organizations on it, which is sort of the theme for our department, as you know, is partnerships, because that's the only way we, as a Parks Department, feel like we can sustain the long-term legacy that we'd like to leave here for our I also wanted to talk about some of the grants that we've been applying for in the last couple of years. We've really done a great job. This is a group of people in our department that other duties as assigned happen to be, they put together grants, and so this isn't, we don't have a professional grant writer. We have a group of people who meet somewhat regularly and keep their eyes open for grants that are out there, and you can see what a difference that makes, just building that collaboration within our department. Last year, we were successful in receiving $877,000 in grants. This fiscal year so far, we've received over $800,000, and we're looking at, we've applied for almost $2 million in grants. I think that's relevant, especially now, given Prop 68 passed, and so there's going to be several hundred million dollars in grants that will be available over the next couple of years that we'll be able to apply for. The challenge for us is going to be coming up with dollars for that, actual money. Usually, it's a 50 percent match, so we have to think about that. Oftentimes, we can use those volunteer hours I mentioned as grant matches, but that's not always accepted, and it's not a complete alternative, so just something we have to think about as we move forward. Talking about new community events, it's sort of a way to market our program, market the department, and work with other agencies. Some of the things we've been doing, working with the MAU, as you're well aware, I'm sure, and Supervisor McPherson, I'm sure you're aware of this as well, that the Museum of Art and History is a county park, and so we're partnering with them on a number of activities. Friday night recess, we'll be doing one coming up here in July. And then with the Aquatic Center, we've really expanded our programming, and we've marketed in a different way, so that, first of all, people are getting more bang for their buck, literally getting more entries into the facility, and also doing things like the throwback swim, and the polar plunge, and the Mother's Day Swim, and National Learn to Swim Day, something we'd like to see in the future, is maybe possibly free swim lessons for kids in the county, if we can. So we're looking to how we can finance that, or what we can do to bring resources to bear on that one. Family movie nights, thank you Supervisor Leopold on that one. We're moving forward with We're moving forward with family movie nights, Heart of SoCal, Thursdays, the third Thursday every month until October through October. We're also doing one up at Highlands Park this month in July. These are ways, of course, to highlight some of the things that we have in our community, some of the new parks that we've opened, and also our department engage our community. So how are we doing as we really compare ourselves with other park agencies? If I want you to sort of take a look quickly at those first two graphs, the operating expenditures per capita and the general fund contribution. As it stands with our national peers, we're well below, which is a good place to be. In other words, we don't cost as much as a lot of other parks departments, and we run pretty lean and mean. And then the other two graphs, we earned generated revenue in the number of parks. So we have a high number of parks, and we also earn a significant amount more in revenue than other agencies across the country. So I think we're doing a good, we're doing well, and we keep our eyes on that, make sure that we continue to be above and below the norms where it's appropriate. All right, so getting to our actual budget. First thing I saw on here was like, wow, okay, why are our revenues down? Who do we need to talk to? How are we going to make more money? But what it turns out is actually that ends up being from our storm damage repairs and some of the things that we did last fiscal year, we showed that as revenue. And so we had several hundred thousand dollars come in in revenue as a result of that. So that's the change. It's one of those accounting things, so nothing to be too worried about there. And as we look at total financing, total expenditures, our 3% increase really has to do with salary increases for staff and utility costs. So we're looking at every opportunity on how we can reduce our utility costs. And one of those things, of course, is we just got the solar power in at Simkins, which is actually going to make a significant difference in how much it costs us to keep the lights on and the motors running for the pumps to the pool and all of that sort of thing. I do want to point out also that, as a department, we rely heavily on extra help, which is a good type of workforce. It engages the youth of our community, gets them involved in recreational programs, youth programs, and just caring, teaches them to care for their community. That's primarily where our seasonal help is, and also it's an efficient use of resources, because obviously there's a significantly lower cost with extra help seasonal employees. And as you look at it, it's 32% of all our staff hours. It's a pretty significant equivalent to about 22 and 1/2 full-time equivalents. So we are doing something in the supplemental. We're actually taking a park supervisor and converting it to a park maintenance worker 3 and an admin aide. That's going to have no increase in the net county costs. That will also provide us better services to the field. The admin aide's going to help support the maintenance staff in the field, and the worker 3 is more of a field-level position. And the 1819 goals, we actually are opening our 64th park, Twin Lakes Beachfront, thanks to Betsy Lindberg and public work staff and everybody's efforts here. We're going to be opening up Twin Lakes and maintaining it, so that's a pretty exciting thing. I have, we have some ideas on activities we can do down there, hopefully bring in a little money through concessions, and also just highlight, once again, this is a county park, and welcome to it. We're also going to be looking at reviewing the park dedication and updating, park dedication fees and updating those. We're looking at how we can get more social media presence and more active participation in our events. And for those that don't know, beginning construction of Santa Clara Park is actually code for Leo's Haven, the all-inclusive park. So Leo's Haven is going to be right in the middle of Santa Clara Park, and that's, we're actually pretty excited that we'll be getting construction on that. We do have a few financing issues to work out, but we're very far along the line on that. And when financing issues work out, I mean that we might need a little bit of help. So complete the bike pump track at Pinto Lake. That actually is a cooperative effort between Supervisor Caput and Supervisor Friend. Thank you for working together on that. Just a great addition to the facility, longtime master planning that we've done there to activate more recreation, and this is a great opportunity to do that. Recreation software, sounds really exciting, but actually, this is going to be the sort of the spine, the backbone of our department. This is how people can register for classes. This helps run things in an efficient manner, gets programming out there. It really is just a great program that we're looking forward to changing. It's an antiquated system we've had, and I think we'll be able to track numbers better for everybody. And then actually start an operations plan based on our strategic plan. So that's all the goals that we're going to be pushing for this coming fiscal year. So some challenges for the future. Here's just a glance at some of the programs. I'll read them all to you right now. Actually, just kidding. The number of programs that, I actually didn't, we actually didn't get them all onto the slide, but we have had a significant number of cuts to the department. It's my hope and our hope that we can find a way to sustainably regain some of the programs on our slate, and it really does touch the gamut throughout the community of all the different types of programs that have been cut. So I just want everybody to be aware that we're going to make every effort within our means to get those programs out there and add some programs, actually. As I said, even free swim lessons for kids in the community would be a big one. So, major capital needs, Leo's Haven. We have an incredible group of community members spearheaded, of course, by Tricia Potts and Mariah Robertson. They've come close to raising $2 million on their own. We, as a department outside of the general fund, have raised close to $1.5 million with grants and dedication fees and other money that we've cobbled together through contributions. But we do need some help. We're going to need some help to get this across the finish line. We'll be able to at least finish Phase 1. I'd like to see us get through Phase 2. We can really have a beautiful park and do it in the most efficient, and it would be cost-effective to do it all at once, actually, if we are able to do that instead of having to add, delete things. So whatever money might be available, or whatever resources we have that we can think about, I'm happy to work with the Board. We will continue to work to find those dollars, but we are set for construction to start next April. So, looking forward to that. Possibly even October, we may be able to do something as far as groundbreaking. Simkins Swim Center, it is a 20-plus-year-old facility. There are a lot of things that have begun to show the years. It's been well cared for, but something we have to think about. It's going to be a $1.5 to $2 million renovation in the coming years. We have to figure out how we're going to do that. I plan to work hard to make sure that we have that and that we work with the community to find resources to do that. Heart of SoCal Linear Parkway, very exciting. Of course, safe routes to school for kids. There's a whole number of tie-ins to the community. It really brings SoCal together. It does provide a heart for SoCal. We have just, probably have a million dollars that we've put into it almost at this point, and we have a couple hundred thousand dollars to get us across the finish line. Given the grants that we have coming online, I think we have a good shot at that, and we'll work hard towards that. Again, as I said, we may need some matching dollars. Farm parks along the same lines, very close to getting that wrapped up. We have the pump track that we're looking at there, and as well as the pedestrian bridge. And Felton Discovery Park, which is just a great collaboration with the community, with the Feltons, library friends, and as well as the library. We think that's going to be a beautiful addition, and we were very fortunate to be successful in a $395,000 grant, which gets us very close to the finish line on that one. So staffing needs, I just wanted to highlight, as you've seen in the past, we are still short on the staffing. This was, of course, the trend in most departments, and for us, we were keeping in line the number of staff with the number of parks we had out there and the services we provided. And then the Great Recession hit, and you can see the dip that hit us at that point. We're still coming back from that. So as we look towards the future, I want to keep that on the forefront and remind the Board that this is something that's important to us. And we do, we do work lean and mean, as I said before, but it does take a toll, and I can, I can keep the spirits up of the staff as much as I can, but we do need some help. And then I did want to point out that July is Parks and Recreation Month, and that we have a number of events that we're trying to provide free to the community. I showed the list of them here on the slide, but just one of the things that's really exciting to me is we're going to do Get Your Play On here on July 28th at Simkins and Shoreline. We're working with all of the Parks Departments in the county together to provide a sort of carnival activities, games type of feel for them to come out and just, they can swim for free, participate in activities for free, very family-oriented, and it'll be a great time. We also have the Parks and Recs, which bring out the dogs to the pool last weekend in August, and then the Live Oak Family Fund Run, the movie at Highlands, as I mentioned. And I also just want to take a moment and thank the CIO's Office and the staff, and Carlos, especially during these tough times right now, that they've, the incredible support they've shown us and the help they've given us. And most importantly, I have an incredible staff, and we're very fortunate that we have the group of people we do working for us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaffney. Are there questions or comments before we open up for the community on this item? Supervisor Caput?
I want to thank you for all the interest and all the work you're putting in on, you know, parks throughout the county and activities that are going on. And I know you've been working real hard to keep the costs down on some of the programs, because we do have a lower-income part of the county that needs to be able to afford to go to different programs like aquatics and all that. So the prices are pretty good. Is there a lot of pressure, though, to raise prices that you're having to actually fight off?
Yeah, I think with everybody, this economy, the cost of living, I don't know how, I'm going to joke about this, you talked about peanut butter. I don't know how Costco keeps a hot dog and a soda for a buck fifty. We certainly have a hard time keeping things at the cost they need to be. And to some degree, a lot of people in my profession, myself to some degree included, believe these services should be free for our community, but they do have a cost, and it is very difficult in these times. It's a daily struggle.
And then like with the pump track and Leo's Haven, those are all free, right?
Absolutely.
That's wonderful.
Absolutely.
That's what we grew up, Parks, you just went down there and played cat.
Absolutely.
You went down there, you're not locked out. Real quick on the pump track, it's on schedule, and the bids are coming in, and so how does it look right now, starting date?
We're hoping by mid-October it'll be open.
That'd be great.
It will be.
You bet. I want to thank Supervisor Friend, we've been working on it. We're actually both working on it because it's technically in his district by the dividing line of Green Valley Road. And so it's going to be, I guess what I was surprised by was when we had the first discussion, public discussion out at the site at Pinto Lake, and all the people that showed up. It was on a Saturday morning, and there were parents, and their kids were there, and they brought bicycles just to look at it. And it really, it surprised me how many people you were there. And it was, it's something that when I was a kid, we didn't have pump tracks. I didn't, you know, now it's actually very popular.
I think when we were kids, we had dirt lots, and we had orchards we used to be able to ride through, but those, we don't do that anymore. So yeah, we have pump tracks now.
Yeah. And this one kind of surprised me. I saw the name Marmos. Do you know anything about Marmos? I used to, that's over there by Pinto Lake. It used to be privately owned by the Marmo family, and so I guess now it's part of the Santa Cruz County Parks in the last number of years. Okay.
It's an affordable housing site.
Yeah. Okay. That's an old, old name that just kind of showed up here in the report.
Oh, there we go.
You bet. Thank you.
Supervisor McPherson?
Yeah, I thank you for that presentation, Mr. Gaffney. And I just want to say that I nicknamed you the Energizer Bunny, and it just goes down throughout the staff. And you're to be really commended for revitalizing this Parks Department. We've had the opportunity to do it. Fantastic job with the, with the limited resources that you have, that we've been able to contribute more to. And I don't think lean and green, or excuse me, lean and mean is the right terminology. I think lean and green would be better.
That is good.
So, yeah, okay. But I can't tell you how much I appreciate, and I'm going to focus on the 5th District of how much we've been able to, you've been able to accomplish, we all have, throughout the purchase of the Bear Creek Park. That was phenomenal, it was a cooperative effort with the Boulder Creek Recreation District and Land Trust of Santa Cruz County. It was a really great project to have a lot of different agencies come together to make it a reality. And I want to mention that there's a picnic, a public picnic this Saturday at 1:00 PM at Bear Creek Park in Boulder Creek. So come out and enjoy it, the folks of San Rosso Valley, especially those of the Upper Valley. It's a tremendous addition to that community.
Yeah, the founding families picnic, yeah. Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah. And Highlands Park, I saw the movie night coming up July 1st, and again, I can't say enough about the Felton Library-Discovery Park combination, so to speak. Congratulations on getting that grant, everybody. I tried to call some folks to say how important each of them played a part in that. It's the first of its kind in the state, as far as I know, of having an indoor library, a conventional library, and then an outdoor library for, to discover nature, so to speak.
Absolutely. And it physically flows into it. It's beautiful.
It is going to be just a highlight, and I can't, there's a lot of people to thank, but Nancy Gert and Jim and Michelle Mosher, who are, Jim is here, they've worked night and day on this, and it's a fantastic addition to the valley, the Lower Valley and Felton. And it's another cooperative effort. It really is amazing when we can get our act together between some agencies and how well it works. So thank you very much for your efforts and everybody and your staff. Much appreciated, and we're going upward and onward.
Thank you for your leadership.
Supervisor Leopold?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Gaffney. You know, it's amazing how much work gets done and how many people get served by that small amount of money we actually give you. So we're, I'm very aware of the needs of the department. I'm glad that the investment that we made last year for a volunteer coordinator has paid off handsomely already, and I think that will grow over time, because we know that when we've gone out to the public and asked them to support the parks, they've shown overwhelming support. And so there's a lot of love for the county park system, and getting people involved as a volunteer is great. I also want to thank you, your staff, everybody involved, for helping the SoCal Family Movie Night series take off. You know, we'll be doing our second movie this, tomorrow night. We're going to be showing the Goonies, but it really lights up that Heart of SoCal Park. I heard a few people say this is the first time I've been there, because it's tucked away there behind the post office, but it's been a long-sought-after amenity to SoCal. And when combined with the pathway that is going on, it really is the last major element of the SoCal Village Plan that was created many years ago, many years before I became supervisor. But the idea of linking up the different parts of SoCal, this, the pathway becomes incredibly important. And I was fortunate enough to be at the SoCal School Board when Cheryl Bailey and other members of the staff made a presentation of what it's going to look like. The school is giving us easement to their land as they do some reconstruction of SoCal Elementary, and it's going to just be a fabulous addition to SoCal. And I just want to express my appreciation to you and your staff for the hard work that you did finding the money. I know you've written a number of grants, and when I see the grant totals that the Parks Department has generated, I'm very appreciative of that. I know that that takes a lot of time outside the regular workday for people to put into it. I know Will and Cheryl and everybody else puts a lot of time into it. I know we get help from some of our Parks Commissioners.
Yes, absolutely.
And I'm hopeful that we'll be able to access some of those new funds from Prop 68 with the success that we've had so far. It's really, it's really made a difference in the department. I also wanted to acknowledge the work that you did and will be using again this year for the pickleball court at Bromer Park. You know, I go by there, and I see people playing on that court all the time. And sometimes I reserve this spot, but it's just, sometimes it's just people playing pickleball or other games on that court. It's really, it's really been a welcome addition, and the Board's going to be going there again at the end of budgets for our pickleball tournament. Supervisor McPherson may give up the trophy, we're not sure. He's going to fight hard for it.
The big pickle.
I also just want to express my appreciation to Eric Strum and other people in Parks. You know, we had a spate of violence happen on the SoCal Drive corridor. The Sheriff's Department did a great job in terms of going there and capping the violence. But one thing, it became very clear, is that young people needed to have better activities. So you and Mr. Strum immediately made Winkle Park available. I understand yesterday that there's going to be an ultimate frisbee game with staff, with some of the families over there, which I think is going to be fabulous. I know we've gotten some other act- I know we've gotten some other activities and other nonprofits involved, but just the willingness to be in partnership with, with community-based organizations to address this. I know it's part of, you would see it as part of your mission, but I just want to express the appreciation for the community, that you made it available and, and working together, we can help make the lives better of a lot of people. And I just really appreciate that. We have the ongoing maintenance challenges. You know, last year, we saw so many trees come down at Moran Park. Ms. Iliff did a great job of managing that, and we need to provide more money to make sure that we can maintain our properties very well. Lastly, I'll just say, we're at a great point, I think, in the life of Shanticlee Park. A park that was assembled over many years through the redevelopment agency, which was planned and permitted before the closure, before the elimination of redevelopment money. And we've been struggling with figuring out how we could actually build this park for the most densely populated part of the unincorporated county. And these incredible volunteers have stepped forward. Mariah Roberts, Trisha Potts, their entire families, they have engaged hundreds of volunteers to contribute a tremendous amount of money. It's hard, it's hard to adequately express my appreciation for volunteers who raised close to $2 million. That's just, that's a level of community fundraising which we haven't seen in Live Oak, and we don't see too many places around Santa Cruz. And it wasn't done with a bunch of big grants, it was done with a lot of small donations.
Absolutely.
And I think we're gonna be challenged. And when it comes to time, I'll be asking for help from our county administrative officer to figure out how we do our part to make sure that now that the community has weighed in such, it's such a big way, that we can complete this park, not just Phase One, but the entire park, which has been long sought after. And we've seen this outpouring of support, so I think, I think we have to do our part. But I want to express the appreciation to you, the staff, Kim Namby, who, who has to figure out how to stretch those dollars as far as possible. And she still has all of her hair, so that's pretty good.
Absolutely. And she's able to manage me sometimes.
Well, I'm not sure about that. But thank you for the work of the department, it's really appreciated in the community.
Thank you.
Supervisor McPherson?
Yeah, I mean, real briefly before we get to hear from members of the community, but one, I want to thank you for your commitment to making sure we have access for all people in our community to our open spaces and our parks. It's, I look forward to working with you over the coming years to increase that access. Second is, as you mentioned it, Twin Lakes is coming along, we're so close to having this project finally done, and I really look forward to activating it, although it's, if you go out there, there's already a lot of activation.
Absolutely.
But, but make sure we're coordinating with our programs. But thank you for your work and your commitment.
Thank you.
To our community.
And we're getting you a bathroom in Davenport, promise, that's gonna happen.
All right.
That's already done.
Supervisor Caput, you got a follow-up?
You bet. Just a quick commentary, and we've talked about it, and you've actually been working on it with myself. But looking around the room, being older than most people here, I think Bruce and I maybe are the two older ones.
He has a trophy and you don't.
But when I was growing up, the old black and white TV, they would have a commercial, a public commentary and commercial that was showing kids going down to parks, and they would be locked out, the parks would be locked out. It said, "Please don't fence me out." And there was to open up everything so the public, who pays for everything, can actually use it. This is the sad commentary on what's happening today. If you drive around, we're seeing fences go up everywhere. It's kind of ironic that no matter what a political persuasion somebody has, but when you have a major problem, they think about building a wall rather than a bridge. So, my kid's school, when I go there now, about 10 years ago, there were no walls. Now, if you go to that same school, they have eight-foot fences all around, and it's locked up, and not only locked up during the school hours, but locked up during the weekends. And in talking to the schools, of course, then they say, "If we're gonna unlock those fences and gates in the weekend, we want money." It's all about money now, and that's really a sad commentary, and also, bad things do happen, and then maybe there's an overreaction. I don't have a solution for it, but somehow, we have to open up these playgrounds and we have to tear down those walls rather than building walls. But, and it's also talking about an, I'm sorry, an atmosphere of education or an atmosphere of public parks and school grounds. If you look at it, it gives off an impression that it's like a prison. And that's not a, that's not a good environment. It's locked up, it has high fences, you have kind of, it's, it's, it's really not, it's not a good way of, you know, handling things. So, anyway, what I, what I'm getting at is, we need more park space, we need more schools opened up for kids to be able to go down there. We have to keep the costs down so we're not excluding lower-income families. And we have a big problem on our hands, and I think we could come up better, with better solutions than building walls. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Caput. And just briefly, I just wanted to also add my thanks to your staff. You know, Gretchen and Will and you and everybody on the team, including some of your recent retirements, have done remarkable work. The graph, the slide that shows how the number of parks have gone up or the number of staff have gone down, you know, is very telling. And I think also, we had a small infusion into parks a couple of years ago, and one time reimbursement funds from the state. And you made massive investments as a result of that. I mean, it really was interesting to see how parks really did get transformed. We were finally able to build a new park in, in my district, put that money, put it over the top. Significant improvements in Supervisor Leopold's district, Supervisor McPherson's district, which shows to me that it doesn't take much of an, of an investment in your department to have significant returns. And I think that what the board has been looking to do, and I think that you've proven this under your leadership, but also your team's leadership, is that we have a lot of deferred maintenance needs, but we're not too far off from addressing those needs if we could just give you that infusion. And we have a couple of parks that would transform opportunities for kids in this community that don't have opportunities, that are right on the cusp and you just need that extra push. And I agree with Supervisor Leopold's drive that it's, that that's our responsibility, that's not your responsibility. Your responsibility is to make it happen once we give you that funding, but, you know, the board will work with the CAO to see how we can do that. But I want the staff to know that we recognize that, that your department has been significantly reduced. We recognize that you're doing more than one job at a time. And we also recognize that our parks, even with that, serve, so many people on any given day, including my own family, every weekend, and sometimes I pick up from school scenes every day, we end up at a county park that has to be maintained by somebody, that used to be somebodies, that now those maintenance workers have been reduced significantly. So, you're one of those departments that can do a lot with a little, but if we give you a little bit more, I think that, that it would, it would be transformative for the community and the next generation. I just want, you know, you to be appreciated and acknowledged for the fact that we also recognize that we're not giving you enough right now. We'd like to open it up for the community, it's a member, opportunity for members of the community to address us on the parks budget. Good morning, welcome. Thank you all for waiting.
I didn't bring my stool, but I'm glad Oliver brought his.
Okay. Ready? Oops. Okay. Now, go for it.
Good morning, Oliver.
So, my name is Oliver Potts. I live in Watsonville. I am seven years old. I will be eight years old on July 7th. I am the O in Leo's Haven. My sisters are the L and the E, which is the L in the back. My sister, oh, sorry. Leo's Haven will be an inclusive playground where, where kids like me can play with their friends. My family, my mom has been working with this guy. The family, my family has been working with other people in the community, including you, ways, to raise money for Leo's Haven. I'm here to say thank you. Leo's Haven will be special playground where I can play with my friends, Lucia and Sophia Sir, and Tyler. And Tyler and Manuel. Oh, and my sisters, Lauren and Evelyn. All kids need to play. Thank you.
Supervisor Friend, I would be very worried about a future competition from Oliver Potts.
He's got my endorsement, but you lose votes with it, so.
Hi, my name is Clea Roberts and I live in Live Oak. Since I can remember, my family, friends, and neighbors have been working to build Leo's Haven at Shanticlee Park. Because of this work, I know that all kids, no matter if they have a disability or not, just want to play with their friends. I've met kids who speak different languages, kids who use wheelchairs, and kids who use long white canes to move around. Everyone wants the same things, to be accepted for who they are and have a place to belong. All kids want to be able, I want all kids to be able to play at Leo's Haven, and we're almost there. Thank you for all your help, and I hope you bring your kids or grandkids to play with us.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of your partnership. We have a little ways to go, we do need a little more help, but we are pretty much there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mariah. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning, it's a very hard act to follow. I'm Michelle Williams, I'm Executive Director of Arts Council, Santa Cruz County, and we are so grateful for our 39-year partnership with the county and what has become a particularly robust partnership with the Parks Department under Jeff's incredible leadership and the wonderful staff there. Our arts and our parks are a significant part of our quality of life. A few years ago, you increased your investment in the arts, and as you've seen and experienced, hopefully for yourselves, the MAH and the Arts Council worked with arts organizations and artists across the county to dramatically increase our programming and do incredible things that every day are making our county stronger. Much like the arts, I'm sorry, much like our parks, our arts touch every corner of this county. And last year, the Arts Council had an extraordinary year, granting $230,000 to artists and arts organizations countywide, coordinating a really successful open studios art tour that created almost $1 million in taxable art sales, an epic ebb and flow, and most importantly, we reached over 17,000 children through our arts education programs from the borders of Monterey to the far north mountains. And of course, doing really great work at the Tannery Arts Center to enliven that as a heart for the arts for the entirety of Santa Cruz and the world. It's really extraordinary to be in partnership with all of you, both professionally and personally. I too have children who I take to just about every park in this county. And it is so important, not just for the beauty of this county, but for our physical, emotional, intellectual, and spiritual lives and selves. So, I'm very grateful for our partnership with parks, very grateful for our partnership with all of you, and grateful that we live in this extraordinary space filled with so much beauty. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for your work. Good morning, thanks for waiting.
Good morning, Jim Mosher from Felton. I just want to speak briefly about the work, I'm speaking behalf of the Felton Library Friends, the wonderful collaboration we've had with the county parks and with Jeff Gaffney's leadership in moving forward with the Felton Nature Discovery Park. But I want to also say that it's been really terrific to work with the department and with Jeff and his staff on a broader sense. The strategic planning process that they engaged the community in was very, very successful in our mind up in the valley. We had a huge turnout. We really appreciated the opportunity to have some input into what the priority should be for the Parks Department and to be heard in, in a way that doesn't often happen. So, I just wanted to express our thanks to the staff and to Jeff for being engaged with the community in the way they are, and also having the volunteer program. We're looking forward to be active participants in that. We see lots of opportunities with this new park for engaging the schools, the Santa Lorenzo Valley Water District, which is a partner in that park. And we really appreciate the partnership of the county and particularly County Parks Department, as well as the library. So, in terms of the Discovery Park, we really appreciate Will Ford's work on the grant proposal that was funded. We have, we hope, a good substantial chunk of what we need for construction of this really very innovative park. It'll be the first in the state. There are a couple around the country that have combined a library, indoor learning with outdoor learning focused on environmental literacy, that what we have in mind, we think it's gonna be a model for not only our community, but for the county and for the region and for the state. It's gonna be a model that other communities are gonna look at very carefully. We think it'll be something that will be exciting for all ages, but particularly for young people around the county. So, thank you all, I wanted, I know I've got the yellow light on, I just want to say, I really want to reinforce the messages that many of you already gave, which is, the Parks Department doesn't have enough money. And we out in the community really appreciate the hard work the staff is doing with the limited resources. And I hope, as with Leo's Haven, that we can get over the finish line and that the county can help make that happen. And I want to express my appreciation to all five of you, but particularly to Supervisor McPherson for your hard work on this project in particular. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning. I'm Jonathan Hicken, Director of Development and Partnerships at the MAH. And I want to echo so many things that Michelle said, we're so grateful for your increased investment in the arts in the last few years, and to Mr. Gaffney here for your leadership. I'm so grateful. It's been a big year at the MAH. Since Abbott Square opened just last September, attendance to the museum has tripled. More than 1,500 families in, in this county have become members of the MAH. We've gone from two flagship programs a month to nearly two a day, and we're open seven days a week. We've expanded our pop-up museum program throughout the county in Watsonville and Davenport and Live Oak. It's been a huge year, and we're increasingly becoming recognized as a global leader in creating organizations that are of, by, and for their communities. In fact, the reason Nina Simon isn't standing next to me right now is that she is in London keynoting Europe's largest museum conference in London, sharing this message of how to create inclusive, welcoming spaces. And it's only been possible because of your support. And it's, this work is just getting started, so, so I want to thank you for your ongoing support of the MAH and the arts and the parks in this county. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning. Becky Steinbrenner, resident of APAS. Thank you for your report, Mr. Gaffney and Ms. Namby, for your good work. I always come with questions, and I have questions because I like to look at the line-item detail. I'm kind of a detail person, as you know. So, I have some questions and then I have some comments. And I wonder, in the line-item detail, where is it registered the Quimby Act funds that developers must pay for park development as a result of their development? And also, on page 506, I saw that there is 100, almost $155,000 for historic preservation. And I'd like to know where that comes from and how it will be spent, or how it could be spent, and how those funds are analyzed for prioritized spending. And now, my comments. I was here at a Board of Supervisors meeting when Ms. Potts got up and, and you formally gave, you know, the green light for the wonderful Shanticlee project. And I cannot thank her and all the volunteers enough for all of the very hard work. I know that it was not easy for them to enter into a relationship with the county. And I remember you, Supervisor Leopold, saying it was through her insistence that it happened. be spent, and how those funds are analyzed for prioritized spending. And now my comments. I was here at a Board of Supervisors meeting when Ms. Potts got up and you formally gave, you know, the green light for the wonderful Shanticleer project, and I cannot thank her and all the volunteers enough for all of the very hard work. I know that it was not easy for them to enter into a relationship with the county, and I remember you Supervisor Leopold saying it was through her insistence that it happened. And I applaud members of the public like that, for really pushing forward, and then doing the hard work of raising the money like this group has done. So, I want to come to you this morning with a similar insistent project, and it is at the Aptos Village Project. When the post office jumps, world-famous post office jumps were bulldozed in 2015, Mr. Gaffney told me that he immediately received about a half a million dollars in pledges from people around the country, around the world, if they could be rebuilt somewhere. I propose to you that the Aptos Village Project Phase Two could be returned to a bike jump and pervious paving to serve Nicene Marks State Park users. Nicene Marks has had to close to the visiting motor vehicle traffic eight times since the beginning of the year because there's just not enough parking inside the park, since the informal dirt parking lot has gone away with construction. I want to propose to you that you enter in, or allow us to, or help us negotiate with a public-private partnership, and let's ameliorate the proposed 8,000 cars a day that Senior Traffic Engineer Jack Sorakoff said the Aptos Village Project will bring when occupied.
Thank you.
Please negotiate with us. We're willing to do the legwork that these people have done as well. Thank you.
All right, we'll bring it back to the board, Supervisor Leopold.
Thank you Chair. Thanks again for the presentation, thanks for the testimony, or when I see our partners at the Cultural Council or the MAH, I know that we, that we value that partnership, and I'm glad we're able to support it because it's such a vibrant part of our community. I would like to move the Recommended Actions for Parks, Open Space, and Cultural Services with an additional direction to our county administrative officer to come back on last day with financing strategies so we can complete these projects that people have talked about, Discovery Park, Leo's Haven, Shanticleer Park, The Farm Park, and others. I think it's critically important that we meet the community when they, when they do the hard work, and we need to figure out ways in which we can support these activities. So I ask support from the board.
We have a motion from Supervisor Leopold and a second from Supervisor Caput. Additional questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm actually going to take a 10-minute break now, we'll come back at 10:25 as Planning Department gets set up for their budget item. Supervisors' meeting and budget hearing. We have Item 8, which is to approve the 2018-19 proposed budgets for the Planning Department, including housing funds and any supplemental budget materials as provided in the reference budget documents. We have the timeline, the proposed budget, the line-item detail, the supplemental budget, the consuming agreements list, and the errata. Ms. Boye, welcome back.
Thank you very much, good morning. I'm going to start off by highlighting the strategic plan vision that you guys started and the CO's office led over the past year, and it's over to the right. Santa Cruz County is a healthy, safe, and more affordable community that is culturally diverse, economically inclusive, and environmentally vibrant. We feel that the Planning Department, our mission, our key missions directly support achievement of that vision. First, of course, is through planning for and regulating the use of land and structures through policy planning, permit reviews, and enforcement processes, and those all work to preserve and improve homes, jobs, environment, and neighborhoods. We also engage in affordable housing and community development efforts to increase the supply of and access to affordable housing and community facilities serving lower-income households. The highlights, the big-picture numbers for the Planning Department and the housing funds are shown on this slide. The overall funding is on the order of 17 million. When you deduct the intra-fund transfers, our expenses are actually just about 12 and a half million. The budget reflects 2.3 million in general fund support, about 10.3 is income earned from charges for services and permits. Also, the housing fund number, you know, that's a big number on the right, you know, 15 and a half million. We don't expect to necessarily spend it all, but it is appropriated and available should housing projects be identified and need that type of, or level of support, and it also just gives you a good picture of the level of housing funds that we have available. This slide shows you, you know, a little bit of a historic perspective in the difference between general plan support. The green bars show earlier years when the adopted budgets actually provided more general fund support than we ended up needing, you know, year after year after year. Lately, the converse has been true, where we've budgeted with less general fund support, tried to, you know, been fairly optimistic about permit revenues and haven't always achieved those, and so have required, ended up requiring a bit more. But, you know, in some, the overall general plan support to the Planning Department has decreased about 50% from what it had been before the Great Recession. We, some of the reason that's able to occur is we do have lower staffing levels, a greater proportion of our work is related to permits, and we have a great cost recovery rate. Again, a bit of a historical perspective, in, you know, about 15 years ago, the cost recovery rate in the Planning Department was 57%. The proposed budget reflects a cost recovery rate of 78%, which in my mind is about as good as it gets, and given that we do staff public information and public counter and do a number of other things that don't directly result in revenue. So the net county cost has gone up about 20% over the past 15 years. Budget highlights, again, big picture, we think because of the excellent cost recovery, we are not having to increase fees, we're holding them constant for the second year in a row. We are increasing funding somewhat, where we would have 70 funded positions and two There's three positions that are being added, as you heard when you listened to the cannabis budget. So we will, through the cannabis effort, be adding a building inspector, a building plans checker, and a development review planner. Other than that, we're also adding one and a half positions, half-time position in development review, and then another building inspector. The cannabis staff will be added as required by workloads. Also, just wanted to point out that, you know, that we always knew that, you know, through the recession, we were doing layoffs, and even before that, there wasn't a lot of turnover in staff, but we knew that they, that it would eventually come, and so, once the economy recovered, some, you know, some people retired, some people took positions elsewhere, we've added some positions. So, I wanted to point out that, you know, by the time we fill these positions that we're proposing, almost 50% of the staff in the Planning Department is here for less than two years. That was felt most dramatically a year and a half or two ago by the building section. Out of the six building inspectors, you know, five of them were new, and so I point that out just to appreciate the efforts of management staff, and, you know, also note how exciting it is to have, you know, new energy and new skill sets and experience from other places coming into the department, and it's been great. Staffing levels, again, a bit of a historic perspective. Since the Great Recession and the loss of the redevelopment agency, we lost quite a bit of staff, we've recovered some of that, but we're still about 30% less staff than what our highest level was, which was just before the recession in '07 or '08. I'm going to focus on the permit center now. You know, in, you know, 50% less general fund support, 30% less staff, giving you a little bit of a historic perspective about workloads, the workload has not gone down, you know, commensurately. So, we have about the same amount of staff now as in fiscal year 1112. So that's, the column on the left shows you the activity levels, some of the numbers in the different sections of the permit center, and then there's, the middle column is this year, and the difference, and the percentage difference are in the right-hand columns, and I just, I, it's amazing really, between our cost recovery rates and what staff is able to do, do more with less is really being demonstrated in the Planning Department. We have benefited from the technology improvements that your board has supported, and have been worked on for many years, the training, the cross-training, the new positions, great managers, great new staff, so they're doing a great job, and I just wanted to point out, you know, how much work is being done by the fewer people that we do have. The overall level of permit center staffing is shown in this slide, taking the building section as an example, 22 people altogether at the counter, plant checkers, manager, inspectors, et cetera. We have six inspectors, and just in this past year, you know, some of the projects that have been happening, you're aware of, we've got the Rancho Del Mar, which is a major new and rehabilitation project, we have Aptos Village, which is a big project, Pip and Apartments, 46 dwelling units, the Brookvale Lodge, Sheriff Detention Center, Winkle Avenue Subdivision, lots of solar photovoltaic projects, the Roundtree Project, Janus, on and on, those are some of the big projects that those six people are handling, and that's on top of just all of the regular, normal additions and remodels and new houses here and there. So they have been doing an amazing job of keeping up with it all, and that is, however, why, you know, we are proposing, you know, even aside from the cannabis activity that we anticipate, we do need another building inspector, and that is in your supplemental budget. Some of the enhancements that we've been able to make at the permit center, and this is, you know, kudos to, you know, Wanda Williams and Marty Heaney, and Steve Guinea, Jocelyn, Bob Colcino, the building counter supervisor, Carolyn Burke in environmental, they've all been really working together as a great team, and coming up continually trying to identify ways that we can improve our customer service delivery to the public. We, just this past year, we opened the counter at 7:30 in the morning, particularly for contractors who are able to come in without the competition of other people, you know, trying to get in at the counter, and pick up their permits in a very efficient way. We've extended the counter hours, we used to close at 3, now we close at 4, we're still closed on Fridays, we're open Monday through Thursday. The electronic permit process, you know, and you guys have been very supportive of and promoting that, I don't think we're hitting on all cylinders yet, we do train, offer some training to applicants, we're still working out kinks, but it is available, and we are getting some activity in the electronic plan check and submittal, and et cetera. Wanda Williams, the Assistant Director for Development Review, she spearheaded kind of reviving an inter-agency, interdepartmental management meeting, it's twice a month if needed, sometimes they're canceled, but managers from Public Works, Environmental Health, Planning, Building, Fire if needed, and any of the agencies related to development review, and so they'll go over the aging lists, you know, what projects are lagging, are taking too long beyond our goals, and try to troubleshoot and move things along. They'll also have highlighted on special topics so that everybody can learn from each other and about important topics such as, you know, water supply, or new storm drainage requirements, or whatever, so that we're all conversant in each other's challenges and better able to assist each other and the public. The new challenges for the permit center, you're aware of, the, we've, in terms of development review, the hosted rental permits will be, are happening right now. The Coastal Commission approved the hosted rental regulations on June 6, and last Monday, June 18, we opened the 90-day window for existing hosted rental operators to come in and get their permits. If there are fewer than 250 hosted rentals, then after September 17, we will open to new hosted rental operators. So we'll have to wait and see whether we reach that cap or not. The most significant challenge, as it was last year, but a different phase of activity, relates to cannabis. So, as you know, the regulations require that every cannabis cultivation, manufacturing, or distribution route requires a land use permit. Those are going to be processed concurrently with cannabis license applications, and so the Planning Department is working very closely with the cannabis licensing office. They're going to be of great assistance in helping the applicants with the pre-application, the getting-ready stage of preparing to submit the application to the Planning Department. The accessory dwelling units, we do hope that all of our efforts over this past year result in a lot more interest and applications for the building plan check and inspections of ADUs. Code compliance also will be coordinated with cannabis. We are, we have started using the administrative citations tool that was created, and that has been very effective, so we are, we are planning even stronger use of the administrative citation. There's a warning that can be issued, and then checking back, and if they haven't corrected, then they get a ticket essentially, and they can get tickets every day, and the costs can really mount, so people have been responding to that very well, it's been an effective tool. Also, as you recall, your board asked us to put on one of your agendas a list of potential abatement projects, and we selected, you know, some top priority feasible abatement projects, and that's a pretty new activity as well, and so we're proceeding with some of those abatements with the funds that we had available. Lastly, on the permit center new challenges, I want to talk a bit about the limited immunity amnesty program. It's now available. As you know, the county has offered construction legalization programs in the past to incentivize bringing unpermitted improvements into legality, but participation was limited because of current state law that requires all past work to meet current building codes to, in order to achieve legalization. So that's not feasible in many situations. Your board, in the, you know, in the interests of public safety and supporting availability of safe housing and structures continuing to be available, you know, you took a leap and supported our idea of trying, of offering a type of amnesty program. The limited immunity amnesty program will offer special inspections and will offer building permits for existing unpermitted structures when we determine that full legalization is not possible, but will give building permits to support the needed habitability and safety improvements to a structure. And then structures that are upgraded through the LEAP to meet those minimum safety and habitability requirements will be given a certificate, and there's a picture on the slide here of what their certificate is basically going to look like. We work together, we collaborated with County Council's Office and others to put the structure around the program, because it's easier, it's easy to say, you know, let's just offer an amnesty program, but how you actually go about doing it and making it work is another, is another matter. So we have published a program overview and guidance, sort of step-by-step guidance for people who are interested in participating in the LEAP. One of the first steps is that they complete an application, and also into a participation and indemnity agreement, sort of states the rules. And then there's a special inspection done, and there's a checklist and, for the minimum habitability and safety requirements, and then we prepare basically a report, we tell them what absolutely needs to be done, even if you don't continue to participate in the LEAP because you have really imminent hazards. Otherwise, what needs to be done, and it's at their choice whether to continue or not to meet that minimum safety and habitability, and what types of permits they need. Once those are carried out, then there's a statement of acknowledgement regarding limited immunity for unimprovement, unpermitted permits, and that is a recorded document on title, and it basically acknowledges what is, remains unpermitted, but also acknowledges that it's a safe and habitable structure. And, and we were, are then going to, when you achieve that certificate, that means that you're falling to the lowest level of code compliance, so if we get complaints, you know, we're just not going to take action because this is a LEAP-certificated structure, it's providing housing, it's safe, it's habitable, and we're not going to enforce against it. So we think that will be quite a benefit to participants. Goals for next year, this portion of the presentation will- This portion of the presentation will primarily talk about the major and special projects of the planning department. And on the left, you're familiar because you participated in pretty much all of these accomplishments, is the accessory dwelling units, the hosted rental regulations. We've completed the public participation and almost have drafts of the Pleasure Point Portola Drive Vision Guiding Principles and Complete Streets Design. The cannabis regulations have been adopted. We prepared a draft DIR, which was a big effort. We also prepared an DIR on the Santa Cruz Nissan Project, another big effort. We also prepared an DIR on the Mountain Herman Recreation Project. However, that applicant withdrew it just prior to completion of that DIR. But I point that out just because that was also a lot of work. And so we've been busy. The safety and climate change, that's been something that I've talked to you about for multiple years in a row. Updating the safety element and the geo-hazards and floods and that whole package. The reason for, some of the reason for the delay was close collaboration with Coastal Commission's staff on what, how to handle development or improvements on coastal bluffs, given climate change and sea level rise, et cetera. So the Coastal Commission continued, you know, put out some sea level rise guidance and then they put out a couple of different versions of residential adaptation guidance. We've been reading those, modifying our material. And I'm pleased to report that on Friday, the initial study, public review period, and all of those drafts are, are public. Those drafts will be public and the, the initial study, public review process or review period starts this Friday and it'll go through August 1st. And then we hope to be in public hearings before the planning commission and your board this fall, winter. Goals for the coming year is to finish up the Seaside Beach Estates. We've drafted the regulations, we've held a community meeting, we're working on that initial study. And that will be a new overlay district and rezoning of properties in that subdivision. The Sustainable Santa Cruz County and Code Mod, as you know, has been on pause unfortunately for several years due to not having the staff and having this other work going on. But we, now that, you know, we've accomplished and we've gotten the list pared down in terms of what we're working on and we're hiring new staff, you know, we're very excited that we'll be able to really focus on that in the coming year. The Pleasure Point Portola Drive and Design Guidelines is part of that package, but you will be able to see the work products that come of that effort. So moving along to the housing section. As you know, inadequate supply and high costs have led to a high level of public concern about the crisis in housing that we have. And so the next portion of this presentation will review various efforts being undertaken by the planning department to help address these concerns. You just recently authorized work and directed work on a number of near-term regulatory efforts, including farmworker housing regulations, enhanced density bonus, modifying the mixed-use regulations for affordable housing, permanent ruin housing overlay district, and a modified process for initiating the R combining rezonings and examining fees to look for ways that those might be able to come down. We are participating in the housing task force in terms of exploring whether or not a local housing ballot measure, what that might look like, that the voters might be able to vote on. We are collaborating with the Health Services Agency on No Place Like Home. There's a technical assistance grant that they're interfunding, transferring to us and we will be working with them. And that's all about getting ready to compete for grant funds soon for permanent supportive housing projects. Seaside Lot A will be working with the Public Works Department, Real Property, to dispose of that with the proceeds to be used for future affordable housing activities. The new affordable housing projects that will be going on, you know, working on in the coming year, the Habitat Harper Project. It's, as you know, from ten to twelve units. It's not quite clear how that will finally settle out. But that is a project that will be going through the Development Review process this year. Also, the Successor Agency Disposition Site at Seventeenth and Capitola. Mid-Penn is working on a project there. At this point, the initial proposal, their concept is sixty-six affordable rental units proposed in a mixed-use type of project. The planning department continues, at the present time at least, to be the lead agency for the countywide continuum of care for homeless funding from HUD. And so we remain active in the Housing Action Partnership and the Executive Committee and really appreciate the collaboration that's been going on this past year in particular with the CIO's office, Human Services, Health Services, and throughout the county in terms of steering and prioritizing our homelessness efforts. So in closing, I just want to offer my thanks to the staff of the planning department. There really have been a lot of changes and there's more to come. It's a constant that there's always change. And we've weathered staff reductions, we've managed doing more with, with less in a way that has not compromised quality and customer service. But it's exciting. We've made some wonderful new hires. The team is expanding and there's a lot of great work to be done. And I know the planning staff, you know, the type of people and what drives them is, I know they're all going to continue to do a great job on behalf of the applicants and the community. I value and appreciate their work so much and I know the community does as well. Also wanted to take the opportunity to thank the citizens that serve on the commissions that we staff. You know, the Planning Commission does yeoman's work. The Housing Advisory Commission has been, hosted a public forum on the housing crisis. We've got the Historic Commission, the Agricultural Policy Advisory Commission Committee, the Commission on the Environment. So all of the, you know, there's, there's a lot of public citizens that volunteer and give of their time, energy, and intelligence to try to make our community a better place. And we really appreciate working with them and I wanted to give them a shout out for their efforts. And then lastly, in terms of special thanks, of course, I need to thank Nancy McCollum. She doesn't know this, but I consider her the budget ninja. And I mean, she's so quick and flexible, you know, you need any data or information, it's there. And it's, I don't know what we'd do without her. And, you know, Amy is, is her partner in that. And I appreciate Amy Willbanks really continuing to grow and learn and be just, you know, right there as well with Nancy. Wanda Williams, the Assistant Director for Development Review. I also want to give a special thanks to, I wanted to acknowledge the many years that she has also served as being the zoning administrator, which is, you know, she was, it's a big role to be the Assistant Director of Development Review and take on the zoning administrator. So she just recently, I don't know if you know this, but I think she just recently passed on the baton. And so the Development Review Principal Planners, Steve Guinea and Jocelyn Drake are both being ZA. We may even have been, depending on the level of cannabis activity, it may be that we end up having weekly ZA meetings and they're, they both be pressed into even more service. But thank you to Wanda. Really, I mean, I could go on and on and on and thank all the managers, all the staff for the, for the great work they do. So thank you. And also, of course, to you and for your support and your engagement in the complex, you know, tricky items that we bring to you. I appreciate the homework you do, the seriousness with which you prepare and execute your duties is really appreciated. It doesn't happen everywhere, but it happens here for sure. So thank you. And also, of course, the CIO, thank you for your support. And particularly in the CIO's office, Melody Serino, she is not only, you know, Deputy CIO, she's also our, our, not an analyst, because she's not an analyst anymore, but she, she's so supportive and so easy to work with and can't say enough about working with Melody. So thanks to her too. And that concludes my presentation. The last slide is the recommendation that you have before you.
Thank you for that presentation. It will open up for board questions and comments. Are there board members that would like to make question or comment? Supervisor Caput?
I want to thank the staff too and also the board. We've made things a lot more streamlined when it comes to farm use and what they can do and can't do and how many hurdles that they have to jump through. They're a lot less now than there was before. That could be on signage that they have, advertising maybe for farmworkers that there's shortage. There were a lot of rules they had to jump through. There was also the fruit stands, we're making it more possible. And then also tractor and barn storage use, right? In the past, you couldn't even park the farm tractor in the barn at night. Because I guess the rule was that they thought maybe you could be working and actually doing work on different tractors and running a business out of the barn. I don't know, that was the reasoning. But now they can put a tractor in the barn, they could store it there and they can actually fix it there. They can't run a business out of there, but they can fix their tractor on-site rather than having it transported somewhere. They can also, I believe, have a water sink in the barn also to wash their hands after they're done working. And a lot of, a lot of little things that were hindering improvements and making things easier. And also home improvements, up to what, fifty percent? It's more streamlined now today than it was about four or five years ago. Am I correct on all these?
Yes, we've, we've implemented a number of improvements and we've also identified a whole package more of improvements that still need to get into our code. But to the extent that we have drafted up regs, we are using those as guidance as we do review permits these days.
Sure. And farm stays, things like that. So you've been doing a lot of, a lot of different things, making it easier and taking stress off of ag land and, you know, farm owners. And so I think, I just want to commend, you know, your staff for looking into that and having neighborhood meetings out in my area, District Four, for people to know what's going on. It shows people that we're listening to them and we hear their complaints. And some of them we can make it easier and some we can't. But anyway, and I still don't know one specific case that stood out. Eighty-year-old-plus gentleman lived in a house on his farm. Actually, it was more timberland. And then his barn was down below and every day he'd go down to the barn. And he had a sofa there and he had a TV and just local channels. And then he had also a, he'd like to spend the day after he got up and spend it down at the, in the barn. So I guess he got in an argument with one of the neighbors and they turned him in saying that he was actually living in the barn. And technically, it was illegal at the time. And he was like, I've been doing this for years, you know, staying all day down in the barn rather than staying in the house. So if we, when you get a complaint like that, court enforcement, code enforcement, what do we tell that gentleman now compared to what it was about five years ago?
Well, I haven't heard that story and I don't know when it occurred. But I don't think we, if I, if I had heard it, I would not have initiated code compliance because I agree that someone could walk down to their barn and watch TV and hang out in their barn without it being a code violation. You know, maybe they did some wiring and improvements without a permit, that's another matter. But simply spending time in the barn is not a violation.
Yeah, I went down there, it was worked out, but it was more complicated then than it is today. The neighbor who got angry was saying he was living down there.
Right.
You know, and there was a sink there in the barn, but now the sink is okay and maybe before it wasn't, right?
Right. So it might just be a matter that no permits were obtained for any of that and he was turned in for not getting permits. But yes, you can get permits for a sink in a barn and you, and you can, you know, bring wiring to it, et cetera. What turns it into a dwelling unit is when you have a full kitchen. And so that would be really the sign of it become, having become a dwelling unit.
Sure. And then that's where the immunity code certification might come in?
You know, if there's an unpermitted dwelling that someone, that the county and the property owner, you know, we talk it over, we look at it and we agree that it can't be brought into legality, but that it can be made safe and habitable, then yes, it would be possible to get a list of what you would need to do to a structure to get a LEAP certificate and allow it to be occupied as long as it's safe and habitable. So we do, we've developed a checklist that will be used on the special inspections where it doesn't necessarily require all current code requirements be met. But it does require, you know, some very important safety features in terms of, you know, CO and smoke detectors and P-traps and grounded wires and, you know, all of the things that you do need to make it safe to live in a structure. But yeah, there is potential for all kinds of situations to be, gain a certificate under the LEAP.
And I guess the other, last question would be currently, what would you say the percentage of code violations are actually complaint-driven by either a neighbor or somebody other than just code enforcement officials driving around?
Nearly a hundred percent. You know, we pretty much operate on a complaint basis. We, the building inspectors, as they're just driving around, if they see, you know, active construction going on with fresh two-by-fours and they realize that there's no permit, then they'll post a stop-work notice. You know, that's not necessarily a code compliance, I mean, it is a code compliance case, but it's stop-work, you can't work on this anymore, come in and get your building permit. So that's probably the most frequent type of proactive code compliance that's not based on a complaint, that's just based on driving around, is the stop-work orders.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. Caput Supervisor McPherson?
Yeah, I think, as I've mentioned sometime before, I think this is the biggest changing environment we have in the county government. This is a new era when we've gone through decades of growth control mentality and not bad, good or indifferent. But now to what can we do to meet the housing crisis that's upon us right now? And all the implications that have on our water use and our transportation and so forth. The planning department, which is probably in some respect the most important local government oversight that we have as a county. And it's somewhat troubling to me than my last CSAC meeting that I saw where the state is trying to get into, say, counties, this is what you have to do to provide more housing throughout the state because the state's not meeting its obligation of what it sees as about a hundred-and-eighty thousand units a year. And they're only, we're only building a hundred thousand. So counties, how do you do that? It's something that I just want to keep an eye on the ball at. It's, it was a concern to CSAC in our last legislative conference. I just want, I'm really pleased to see that there's no fee increases included as we try to meet this crisis. We are going to need the help of the construction industry to provide the adequate housing for people in Santa Cruz County. And my hat's off to you, what you're able to do. As you talked about the turnover and half your staff is here less than two years. But I just want to say thank you to them. And it's a learning curve that's pretty steep right now, I'm sure, for all of them. And we have some, some ordinances that are probably a little different from many other counties. But not only that is that we're, we have to oversee so many new developments, if that's the right term. I mean, ADUs, tiny homes, hosted rentals, concern over climate change, all these, and of course cannabis. It's a big, big bucket of ideas that we, you have to, and the planning department and we as a county have to deal with. So my hat's off to you to getting ahead of it very well, I think. And I really appreciate what you're doing. I hope that we get more folks participating in this limited immunity amnesty program. I mean, it's, I understand, you know, the reputation from years past, the planning department gets in the way and so people... gets in the way and so people do it themselves, but there are some unpermitted, in my district as well, add-ons that have happened. And it's really critical for public safety that people participate this and see that we have legal, safe housing additions that have been done without adequate permits. I would just encourage the public to please try to cooperate with us, with the planning department, in making that safer place for everybody in Santa Cruz County because particularly in the Santa Cruz Valley, one bad explosion could really, well, I hate to think about it. So I just really encourage folks to participate in that and I really appreciate your taking that on in the planning department. You've done a lot of things and had to adjust and innovate in some respects, some things, and I think you've really done a very good job. So I thank you and everybody in your planning department for getting us in position to meet the challenges, to provide more adequate housing for the people of Santa Cruz County. Especially in the rental area, rental units. We all recognize that's a big need here, but thank you for everything that you do in your planning department.
Thank you, Supervisor Coonerty.
Good morning. Yes, still good morning. First of all, I want to thank you. In working with your department, we always find you very responsive and easy to work with and really committed to providing good service to the community. And I also want to say your, over the couple of years I've been here, your commitment to outcomes and goals has really been remarkable. You're one of the best departments in terms of providing clear goals in the budget this year and really a model for a lot of other departments. And so the direction you've been moving is great. When you look at the numbers of permit applications and your staffing levels, it's challenging and technology can help, but I think really having the department get on the cutting edge of the continuous improvement efforts to figure out what is really necessary, what goes to the core of your mission versus what is paperwork or the way that we've always done things? How can we, can we meet standards in a different way? Because I think, you know, asking whether your staff is new or not, asking them to keep up with that level of work in a way that is good for them and the applicants is going to be a challenge. So I think really looking at every process and trying to figure out what's the end goal and then working backwards from there and seeing if we can do things differently. And coming to us or to the CAO's office for the changes or resources necessary to make those, to make those changes, I think would be a benefit. But I want to thank you for your collaboration and your real commitment to customer service and the plan department.
Thank you, Supervisor Leopold.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I want to express my thanks to staff. There's a lot of work that's been going on in the first district. Ms. Levine was involved with our pleasure point planning process, which I thought was, there was a lot of suspicions at the front end of that process and I think by the end of it, people felt like their concerns were actually reflected in the outcomes and I think that that's a good public process. And it took a lot of work and I appreciate the work of the staff to help make that happen. The Nissan EIR was pretty thorough. And we were criticized, I was criticized because we had it done by staff rather than consultants, as if consultants were somehow better than staff. I feel like staff was more responsible. And I thought it was a strong document that provided us with good information. And it was a difficult decision, but it was helpful to have that kind of information. So I appreciate the work the staff put into that. Matt Johnston has taken over for code enforcement. I thought it would be hard to replace Robin Bolster Grant. She did a great job. Matt has been very responsive to the needs of our office and I appreciate that. And the same thing with Martini, who's in building inspection, has been there to address concerns that have been brought up by constituents. So I appreciate that. Steve Guinea is also very helpful to be at my staff on the development applications to review what's going on and he's very useful in providing information to help us understand what's, what kind of development activity is going on in the first district. So I thank you for that. There's lots of other planners that we work with. I could go through a whole bunch, but you know, we have some complicated projects. We, in, as the most urban part of the unincorporated area, we have lots of different kinds of projects and we depend on the planning staff to be able to balance a lot of different needs and I think they've been doing a good job. I had a couple of questions I wanted to ask. One, in your presentation, we talked about the additional cannabis staff, which I have supported. And I'm trying to get a sense from you, when the cannabis licensing office made a presentation here on Monday, they estimated, and that's all we could do, is that we might have 150 cultivation licenses and 75 manufacturing license. So the three additional staff, I imagine that they'll work on those, but I can't tell. And maybe you can share with me whether that level of work can be handled by three people or should we expect that there will be other people in planning who will also be working on that?
Right. So that's our best guess in terms of where to start in terms of adding staff. Nobody quite knows how, what, how this is all going to unfold. I mean, I think you heard Robin Bolster Grant say that, you know, we anticipate a trickle at first, not a deluge. And so we're gearing up, they're trying to get people ready, we will add staff as needed. But even though we do add three staff, it's not going to be just those three only doing cannabis. So, you know, we're sort of hopeful that they will be able to do, there's a net gain in terms of being able to keep up with the cannabis stuff, but also do a better job with timeframes and reviewing other flavors of permits as well. But, you know, it's really hard. It really just depends on the nature of what actually comes in, whether they're, you know, level-three staff administrative-type things or they need, do I all need a public hearing by the ZA? How complicated are they? Is there issues to work through or is there fairly straightforward going into existing buildings? Are there a lot of going into greenhouses in ag? You know, that should be fairly straightforward. So, you know, the controversial ones where the public, you know, doesn't like what's being proposed, those always end up taking the most time and care and a deliberative, democratic process to decide what happens at the end. So if we get a lot of those, then it will be challenging just with three people.
Well, I think it'll be interesting as the year progresses where, what happens with this. And I'm glad we're providing extra resources because I think it's going to, it has the potential to create a big impact.
Yeah.
I was happy to hear you mention the use of the abatement funds. I know that they've been very helpful in my district with a problem property up in the Summit area. Do we have enough money in that fund?
We've got enough for this year, for the projects that you authorize, but after that, that pot's empty. You know, it's, I think we're planning on spending on the order of close to 150, something on that order.
Yeah, I think it's $140,000.
And we've had that money kind of hovering around in that fund. I don't know if you remember, but last year through the budget time, we sort of consolidated the different flavors of abatement and enforcement funding we had. So we put it all into one pot and made it a lot more flexible with respect to how to use it. So that's why we've got that whole amount available for the types of abatement activities that we'll be doing. But I think next year, you know, if you want to continue that same amount of activity, we'll need to replenish that and that'll be new funding.
Spoil alert for the CAO. Somebody will think of that in the future. The limited immunity program sounds good. I'd be, I would welcome just receiving the materials on it so I can share with my constituents use of that. You know, we've talked here before about the sequel review process for the sustainable Santa Cruz County plan. Every year we're up here, it's a slightly different story about where we're, what we're doing with it. The last time we were, looked at the budget, the concept was that we were going to have a consultant do an RFP and to help develop the EIR. And now we're back to using staff resources and I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out...
I completely understand where you're coming from. It's been a moving target, you know, year after year. Last year, you know, well, first of all, we've switched to, we want to issue an RFP and get an EIR consultant. Obviously, staff will be part of that team, working right along with the consultant. We always are on any consultant effort. Last year, we thought we would have the RFP out and have an EIR consultant hired by now. And that was largely premised on the fact that we thought that we'd have that, the vacant sustainability principal planner position filled. We had made a job offer, they were going to report to work last fall, you know, August or so. That person never did, was able to, you know, had certain issues and we ended up having to open recruitment all over again. And in fact, we're not filling that position until next Monday. We have a new principal planner starting next Monday. We've also had a couple other, we've had a vacancy in that section we just filled in April. Daisy Allen has joined us and she's got a great skill set. We're in the process of making an offer to someone else to backfill Sarah Noisy's position. She just left. So we've really struggled. We haven't been able to make progress on that effort other than the pleasure point and Portola Drive effort, which is sort of part of it. We've continued to work with MIG, that consultant, and we've continued to have some level of staff work on the work products, but we haven't been able to make much progress frankly because of the other things and the lack of staff. So with the fact that we've successfully recruited some talent and they're showing up, including the new housing planner that you've authorized, that person is going to start work on July 9th. So we're very excited that we're getting certain things done. We've got a team. And I gave you in the budget staff report, a tentative timeline for how we currently anticipate that going. And, you know, there's always the temptation to expedite it, you know, let's get it done as soon as we can. But I actually, you know, you'll see that that timeline provides another couple of years plus worth of activity. And the reason is, is that it is, it's a major effort. It's a general plan update, very substantive. It's a code modernization, very substantive. We're doing an environmental impact report. The community will want and deserves a lot of public meetings to really grasp what the final proposals are and what the EIR says about them. I expect that there'll be multiple planning commission public hearings, maybe multiple board hearings. If you change anything, they have to go back to the planning commission. So it just takes time to do it right. But I think, you know, as your comment about the Nissan EIR, it pays off to do it right because you've got the information for decision-making and you've got a defensible action at the end of the day when you do take it. So I do, you know, I feel, just like you, I wish we would have been able to make more progress and I really do think that this coming year we will.
Yeah, well, I, I'll try to remain hopeful.
Yeah.
You know, it's, I feel like the groom waiting at the altar, you know, for this project. And I just think there's so much that we deal with that seems to hinge on this new development pattern, that we're making these efforts around the edges, but we have these big pieces that could make a big difference in the lives of so many people. And so, you know, I'm just, I'm just trying to get it across the finish line.
We agree. We really do.
The, in your presentation, you talked about a greater part of the work is related to permits.
Mm-hmm.
And you definitely had the data to show that. My colleague mentioned that you set goals in your department and he appreciated that. And you'd set a goal for permit processing and we're not meeting that goal right now.
Correct.
And filling these extra positions or, and other pieces, do you think we're going to get closer to meeting that goal? I mean, do you have some sense about it or should that not be an expectation we have? Permit processing is what we get a lot of complaint. I'm sure my other colleagues also get calls concerned, I've been trying to get my project done and stuck in planning. How long is it going to take? Can you help me out?
I think that we will have the opportunity to improve, you know, having another building inspector, having another plan checker available for cannabis plus will really be helpful. We do, we are engaged in the continuous process improvement effort and, like I said, the managers meeting, the inter-agency, inter-departmental managers meeting, you know, one of the first things on the agenda is the aging list, you know, what are some problem projects or what are some comments that don't seem to be getting addressed? And, you know, how can we creatively approach this and get this moving along? And so that has been very helpful. So, you know, we think that it, that we can do better and we hope that we will do better. I don't know, I can't guarantee you that we're going to make that, you know, one-day turnaround or that one-week, you know, turnaround. But I think the increased staff is really going to help.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that and I understand staffing has been low and so I'm glad to see that there's new staff coming on board. And I will ask the support of my colleagues to get a mid-year report on how we're doing about meeting those permit processing goals because I think it'll be helpful for us to know where that is and keep it on the front burner because that is the main way in which so many people in the community interact with the planning department. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Leopold. I'll add just some brief comments and that is, I mean, the board has done a lot of thanking of your staff, but I think that many in the community might not recognize that as the economy has rebounded and as some of the issues in the community become more acute, especially around affordable housing, and state and federal laws have changed around both housing and even the telecommunications industry. The things that are coming forward to your body, to your department and to the ZA and others are much more complex than they've been historically and in many respects, much more controversial. And I feel like you have done a very good job guiding through that process, as has counsel in this regard and guiding the board and others. But a significant amount of the responsibility could be viewed as a burden, but I would view it as opportunity and responsibility of what will happen in the future at this county relies within your department in setting the framework by which we will meet the needs for our community over the next 30 years. And Julie and Wanda and others, I mean, you deal with this every single day, but you've been given an opportunity at this point in time that's very unique. I mean, it's a very consequential time in history and the board recognizes that we've been trying to do everything we can on the policy side, but from the implementation side and the interface side, a lot of it falls on your staff and we see that. I just want to make sure that you know that we recognize, we recognize it's going to be complex, we recognize some of these items might be controversial, but we do legitimately appreciate the work that you're doing and the transition time between now and hopefully wherever sitting in these seats at some point in the future will be appreciated for the work that the previous board and planning department did for them so that their challenges they face are different than the challenges we face today, which is really what planning is in your name to actually do.
Thank you.
So we'll open it up for the community. Now's an opportunity for you to address us on items specifically associated with the budgets for the planning department, item eight. Anybody like to address us?
Thank you. Good morning. Becky Steinbruner, resident of Aptos. Thank you for the good report, Ms. Previsich. I appreciate that very much. I do have an idea regarding the amnesty program. Why, and I would like discussion about this, if, why not have, bring back the Citizen Building and Fire Code Appeals Board that did exist in this county, was composed of industry professionals that would have great, had great expertise in coming up with alternate materials and methods. And that would take the pressure off the planning department and then you could work on the Sustainable Santa Cruz County Plan. That was a terrific group of people and your board obliterated that board and I think it needs to be brought back. I want to offer that as my first issue and a call for discussion about that this morning. Second of all, I really feel that the whole issue of code modernization has been, had an N-run about it. The term Measure J was eliminated from the housing element. And I'm concerned that there are big changes in the zoning, changes as came up before your board last Tuesday, without the proper level of environmental review and public notification. And I think you really have opened yourself up to some sequel litigation. Thirdly, I want to just weigh in about the difficult issue of historic preservation. This county claims it is very supportive of that, but it is not walking the talk in many instances. The, each term, partial demolition... The, each term partial demolition has been used misleadingly and led to a complete demolition of an historic building. The last building in the Heen subdivision in the Aptos Village project was completely demolished, and it was called partial demolition. There's also the issue of demolition by neglect that is happening before our very eyes at the Redman-Hirahara place down in Watsonville. That is a county property, and the county is standing by and letting that place fall apart. And that is a shame, because there's a huge story behind that, and it needs to be preserved. Number four, I would like to ask that the Housing Advisory Commission be required to be video recorded or audio recorded. They only take action minutes, as all commissions now do, even your board, and that does not provide for the public the critical discussion that goes on in those meetings, if you can't attend them in the middle of the day on a weekday. I would also like to ask that they be required to declare ex parte communication, and there is no recording available for the public of the zoning administrator hearings. I would like that changed. Two, two requests. I want to know where in the line item it shows appeal fees.
Thank you.
And where, why is the INLU development fee zero?
Thank you, Ms. Steinbruner.
INLU development fee zero for affordable housing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to address us during this item? Okay, we've seen none, we'll bring it back to the board for action. Supervisor Coonerty?
I'll move the recommended action, but it sounded like you had additional direction for a report back.
Yeah, I'd just like a report back at our first meeting in January about where we are with meeting our established goals for permit processing.
So, I'll, I'll move the recommended action with that additional direction.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Coonerty, and a second from Supervisor Leopold. Any additional discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. We'll move on to item nine, which is to consider the 2018-19 proposed budgets of Public Works, including any supplemental budget materials. We have the 2017-18 Public Works Goals and Accomplishments, the proposed budget, the supplemental budget, the line item detail, the unified fee schedule, the continuing agreements list, and the errata. And we have a presentation from our new Deputy CAO and Head of Public Works, Mr. Machado. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, Mr. Palacios, Ms. Miller.
Can you confirm the microphone's on?
It's not on.
You might need to get close to it.
It wasn't on.
Okay.
It's on now.
It's all right.
Let me start over. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, Mr. Palacios, Ms. Miller. My name is Matt Machado, I'm the Director of Public Works and your newest Deputy CAO. My presentation for the Department of Public Works will include some of our 1718 accomplishments, a 2018-19 budget summary, our proposed staffing changes, some of our 1819 goal highlights, some of our future challenges, and some of our unmet needs. In our Administration Division, we redesigned our Capital Improvement Program book. We successfully tracked and administered storm damage funds. In our Capital Projects Division, we completed project oversight of state grant-funded Roundtree rehabilitation and a reentry project for the Sheriff's Department. And we have nearly completed our Twin Lakes Beachfront Coastal Access Improvement Project. In fact, paving is occurring this week, and by Friday, we should have it completely open for public access, which is great news.
Woo-hoo.
Very good. I'm knocking on wood.
In our Transportation Division, we completed repair work on Valencia Road, Salkell-San Jose Road, Glenwood Drive, and Salkell Drive. All of these projects were a part of our emergency storm damage repairs. We awarded a contract for the voter-approved Measure D pavement management program. I will share a bit more about that in upcoming slides. In our Special Services Division, we negotiated and awarded new recycling and solid waste franchise agreement. We upgraded rain and stream gauges to ensure accurate rain monitoring and prediction of flooding for the county. Our proposed 2018-19 budget summary is as follows. Our budget is divided into three areas of responsibility. The Administrative Services, with a budget of $50,187,554, includes our fiscal team, who provides accounting and reporting for more than 80 Public Works budgets, also including our program administration, who is responsible for the overall budget, our county CIP, 36 county service areas, our parking program, and our fleet management. Our Transportation Group, with a budget of $54,571,346, includes our road, road design, our road operations, our survey department, our development review, and transportation planning. In Special, in Special Services, with a budget of $32,051,086, it includes our sanitation engineering, stormwater management, flood control engineering, recycling and solid waste, and construction management, for a total Department of Public Works budget of Our proposed staffing changes include the addition of one accountant analyst, one IT applications developer, two solid waste coordinators, and one principal planner in solid waste. This is for a total of five new positions, resulting in a total employee number of 266 full-time employees plus three part-time employees. So, a bit about our goal highlights, just a few of them. I will start with our Measure D project. This project is, has been awarded. Construction will begin this summer. We anticipate completion this fall. And I would like to highlight some of the areas that you see on this slide. In District One, we will be resurfacing Miller Road and the Miller Cut Off. In District Two, we will be, we will be resurfacing roads in the area of La Selva Beach. In District Three, we'll be resurfacing Martin Road in the area of Bonney Dune. In District Four, we actually completed that project this current fiscal year. It was the replacement of the Casserly Road Bridge, and that was a completed project for Measure D. And then, in District Five, we are resurfacing a number of roads in the Boulder Creek area. Some highlights in our Capital Projects Division. We plan to complete construction of the Behavioral Health Office building. We plan to start the Felton Library construction project, and to begin construction of the La Selva Beach and Boulder Creek branch libraries. We plan to complete preliminary design of the Live Oak Library Annex at Simkins, and this will include considerable community outreach. And we plan to select a design-build team for the Aptos Library Project. Another great project is our Davenport Recycled Water Project. This project anticipates completion in September. We will be offering recycled water to farmers. This week, actually, we are planning to construct the pipeline across Highway One, which will be our potential water supply for the Ag community. Additionally, we are grading the water storage pond currently. Some highlights in our Solid Waste Division. There is a lot of focus about organics processing. We will be working on the mandates of AB 293 and SB 1383. The essence of these mandates is, will result in a dramatic reduction of organic waste going to our landfill. For some numbers, by 2020, we need to reduce organic going to the landfill by 50%, and by 2025, we need to see a reduction of 75%. There is a substantial cost to, to reach these mandates. We will be looking for partnerships with our local cities. We believe that through partnerships, we can find win-wins and reach the mandated goals. Some of our future challenges include our solid waste area. Our landfill currently has about a 10-year capacity. Prior to that complete, that complete capacity, we must open a landfill, a, a transfer station, and at considerable costs, so staff is working diligently to locate a, a site. And one of our larger challenges is, continues to be in transportation. We've had some wins here, but there continues to be challenges. I will start by commenting that our county has 600 miles of unincorporated roadways, 150 bridges. We have a deferred maintenance of about $150 million, and our current average PCI or pavement condition index is less than a 50. So, our system is currently failing. But fortunately, in the, in just the past year or so, we've seen some new funding. The chart before you shows those three areas of new funding, SB One, Measure D, and a vehicle impact fee. In fiscal year 1819, we anticipate $8 million of revenue from those combined programs. This would be in addition to our historical roadway maintenance funding, which is, comes from our gas tax and a bit of federal gas tax through the RSTP program. Our prior funding was about $9.5 million, so for perspective, this is a substantial increase, which is greatly needed for the deferred maintenance that we have. The challenge is really regarding the SB One. If you look at the SB One number at $4.7 million, it represents about 25% of our overall maintenance funding. And this current year, this fall, there is a ballot that will most likely include a choice by our voters to possibly repeal SB One. This would clearly devastate our proposed funding of maintenance of, for roads. Additionally, SB One currently is being used to match our storm damage projects for federal funds. It's a 25-75 program, so we have 25% of the funding, the local match, to secure 75% federal funds. And if that were to happen, if SB One were to be repealed, we would be forced to use our Measure D funds to match those FEMA projects. That would certainly increase our deferred maintenance to our road and bridge program, devastating us in the future. Some of our unmet needs include our aging Public Works facilities and our aging equipment. With that, I would like to thank our dedicated and hard-working Public Works staff. I would like to thank our CAO office for their guidance, and I would especially like to thank your board for your continued support. Together, as a team, we can serve the public, hopefully well, and especially in the future with our funding plans. Public Works recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve the 2018-2019 budget, including any supplemental materials. Staff and I are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there questions of our Public Works Director? Supervisor Leopold?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Welcome aboard. I know you've been here a little bit, so you're, so you're starting, you know where the bathroom is, and, and soon you'll find every single one of the potholes that exists on our roads.
Yes.
Although, our staff does a very good job to, to get out there when, when we tell them that they're there.
Yes.
And I appreciate the, the presentation, and of course, one of the concerns that we all hear is about the conditions of our roadway system, and I was very pleased and gratified when voters, supported by over a two-thirds margin, to support Measure D. That, that effort to, to infuse, and here, $2.7 million, only to grow over time, is really helpful to us. And to have the legislature then come around and finally, after many, many years, provide a funding mechanism around, with SB One, we, as I've told my constituents, that with these two pieces, within a couple of years, it's a totally different system. And you can look at that, that graph you had, showing the increases in funding over the next five to seven years. You know, we, we might get a lot closer to having the money we need. The last time I remember asking staff if, or we get some work done, I thought it costs about $12 million to maintain our 600-mile road system. It's a couple of years old, so now it's a couple million dollars more, I'm sure.
Yes.
But when you look at those three sources that you pointed out, and saw that by 2023, there was $13 million there, you, you can see that we're getting a lot closer to having what we need, and to increase our PCI, our pavement condition index. So, I think that it's going to take a lot of work, and I appreciate the work of Mr. Weisner, who's, who is Johnny-on-the-spot when we call about these different projects. And sometimes when we push projects, try to push projects up the, the, the priority list. So, he has a very difficult juggling job, and I appreciate his ability to work with the staff and me. I also, in hearing about the, the list of roads that are going to be resurfaced this year with Measure D funds, I'm glad that they're more of our rural roads. You know, one of the things that we told people is that when, during the very difficult years of the Great Recession, we did not have the money to, to maintain our road system, and it was a triage system, and we focused on arterials and collectors and, you know, the places where it got the most traffic. But I know that my rural residents kept on wondering, what about, what about us? And so, the, the folks on Miller Hill, and Miller Hill Cut Off are really excited, but it's also, it, people up in the mountains, in my district, now believe that things will get better. And I think if, we are all going to have to work very hard to prevent the repeal of SB One, and I appreciate the effort the staff has taken to make sure that we have signage, so people can see that, where we're spending that money, and that they can get the benefit of it. And hopefully, we'll remember it when they get to the ballot box in November. The, one of the things that I think we'll need to do a better job on, Mr. Machado, is to tell the story of when we do this work. You know, the, the Public Works Department, our road crews and others, do incredibly important work, which most people don't have any idea about. And we have got to figure out a better way to tell that story, and I think it's especially important over the next couple of months, as we want them to see that investment. But I think it would be very important for the department, and for the county as a whole, so people can see that investment, their dollar is actually making a difference. And so, I really encourage you to think about that, work with our Public Information Officer, and really think about sharing the story of, of what we're doing for our county infrastructure in a better way. I think, I think it will really benefit everyone. I also want to, what you called special services, you know, the, our, our landfill always seems to have at least 10 years left on it. It's, it's, it's amazing, it's had 10 years left on it for a long time, and I know we're getting to the end of that magic of being done, and we have to start preparing for it. But I also want to express my appreciation for the staff, who tries to figure out ways that we can keep things out of our landfill and the wrong things in our landfill. And just this week, the National Association of Counties put out an article about a drug take-back program in the state of Washington, and they said, really, counties led the way for this. And, you know, through Tim Goncharoff and this, and the staff, you know, we've developed this pharmaceutical take-back program, a Sharps take-back program, other pieces that have been really great models, and we've been recognized for it, but it's, we're going to have to continue to work to figure out how to keep things out of the landfill, instead of, and so we can keep that, the little bit of the magic going a little bit longer in our, in the, in the life of that landfill. The one thing, as we think differently about development here in Santa Cruz County, I think we need to think differently about where we invest in infrastructure, and I'd like you to think more creatively than we have in the past, about how we spend our infrastructure dollars, and where we need to spend those dollars. And, and I'm not sure, I mean, I'm interested in, in whether you think we need a more, a stronger plan, so we know that as we look at focusing development, that we have the infrastructure in place to be able to support that development. But I'd like to work with you in order to help make that happen, because I think we, one of the things that... one of the things that hasn't always been done well in the county is planning ahead as communities urbanize. The, the district that I represent was a farming community in the early 70s. And by the late 70s, it is, it had rapidly turned into an urban environment. And fortunately, we had a redevelopment agency for 20 years that put in sidewalks, drainage, curbs, gutters, and built some public infrastructure, but we didn't get it done in 25 years. And now we're looking to put more people there. And so how do we do that? As we look at doing that in other places, that we look about bonus densities and all these different things, we need to have the infrastructure in place to be able to support it. So I would appreciate working with you. I think the Public Works Department does a very good job. There's a lot of people here who our staff works with on a regular basis, and I appreciate that work, and I look forward to working with you on the challenges we have ahead.
Great. Thank you. Your notes are well, well taken. Thank you.
Supervisor McPherson?
Thank you. Mr. Machado, welcome. You never thought you were going to get into something like this, I guess, but we've, we've got a lot of challenges and a lot of uncertainty, of course, with Senate Bill 1 that's going to be probably on the ballot in November. But first of all, I want to thank the voters for their foresight in passing Measure D a couple of years ago. That was really a critical thing. And whatever happens to that Senate Bill 1 referendum move, which I certainly hope fails, and you've heard me say that, deliver that message before. But an important part of Measure D was that it, we became what they call a self-help county. And so there's a pocket of millions of dollars in that Senate bill that would come to self-help counties. And there's not a great number of them in, in the state. So we'd be particularly hit hard. We wouldn't get what we can anticipate of that. I think it, overall, it's $5 billion throughout the state, and about half going to local governments and half to the state. So we'll be, there'll be plenty of discussions about that. And with that being said, I want to thank the Public Works Department for prioritizing and getting more, people, our, people to look at what the needs are and what are the greatest needs and allow us to address them. And I want to just say to our Santa Cruz County residents, we do have Measure D money. We, right now, we have the Senate Bill 1 money, but it's not enough to cover what I think was estimated as $86 million of road damage in the 2016-17 storms. I, my understanding also is that we got about $20 million done on that. So this is going to take some years to get to everybody's road. And we're moving as quickly as we can, and I think the Public Works Department has made that clear of what the priorities are. And I hope that they just have some patience. We're, we're going as quickly as we can and doing an excellent job of that. And I could start saying a few nice things. Everybody in the Public Works Department is to be commended for that. We've really addressed some really serious issues. And as was mentioned in this organic processing, nature, state mandates. And so the, the state helps us, but that puts the pressure on us to get it done, too. So not only is Public Works Department a road department, but it's the landfill, as you've mentioned and all. And, and we've, we've really done a good job as a county to lighten the load on our landfills. But as Supervisor Leopold said, that 10-year window that was probably, what, first mentioned 30 years ago, is, is going to close sometime. And, but the, the fact that we have these state mandates of what we have to do, and it's rightly so, I don't have, disagree with it, but it puts a lot of financial pressure on us to get that done as well. And with that said, too, we have, in the San Antonio Valley, some recycling programs that are, have been going on for years, and the communities, commodities market has just dropped. China's not accepting some of those commodities, and it's putting a lot of pressure on how they can survive. We've helped them along the way in recent years. I don't know how long that can go on, but people in Santa Cruz County, residents of Santa Cruz County, are very serious about their recycling and environmental protection overall. And it's those types of issues that we're going to have to try to meet as well as we move along. But in general, I just want to say thank you for, the Public Works Department for reacting to the huge crisis that we had in rebuilding our road system. People of Santa Cruz County, be patient. We're going to get there, but there's, we have a plan of attack, how to do that. And I think we've done an excellent job of getting to a lot of projects in this last year. So thank you very much and to everybody else in the Public Works Department.
Thank you for your comments. Regarding that storm damage, we believe it could take upwards of five years to get to all of those repairs, and that's with SB1 in place. So fingers crossed that SB1 stays alive so that we can get to all those repair projects. Thank you.
Supervisor Capet?
You bet. I want to thank you for being the new head of the Public Works. When people ask what supervisors do, a lot of times it comes down, you know, there, there are a lot of areas, like public safety and everything, they're very important. But Public Works can be anything from a pothole in front of somebody's house to a $200 million project as far as flood prevention on Apohara River. So anything in between. And all of them are important, especially if you have that pothole in front of your house. So it's, I guess, on different projects, the critical thing, and you're taking over at a critical time, is the Apohara River flood prevention one. And we don't want to drop the ball on that. We want to make sure that we get all the paperwork done and everything. And that's a big responsibility to throw on you in the first six months on the job. So anyway, hopefully, we can help you along the way and do everything we can. And you have a, you have a good staff working with you. And so we'll, we'll be in touch. And the, the other would be, some of the other things we can talk about later, but not right now, is the update on the Highway 152, which is East Lake Avenue and Houlihan Road. It looked like we had some funding for that, maybe it's fallen through, but we still have a chance of getting it. And then also, we did, I want to thank the staff for getting, excuse me, for getting the Casserly Bridge fixed over there by Smith Road. And it is completed, and it was done. So we, we saved a little bunny on that. I don't know if, when we save money on one project, maybe can we shift it over and help out on another project? Hopefully, we can do that.
Yeah. I think, yes. Saving money on one project will allow us to do other projects. So absolutely, we will always try to spread our money as far and wide as we possibly can. Yes.
Right. Okay. And then the other would be, let's see, just an example of how quick Public Works has responded in the past. Smith, Smith Road, people were complaining about trees growing over the road. And after calling the maintenance crew number request, within two weeks, the Smith Road was taken care of. I just want to thank the staff for doing that. And, and also all the work that the, your department has, did in the past with the storm we had in 2017. And doing just an incredible amount of work under terrible conditions. So we're still recovering from that, $200 million plus in damage from that storm. And how, how is the funding going on that? That's probably my last question.
So the, the reimbursement through the federal government, we're still responding to their questions, their comments. We've got packages put together. We haven't received reimbursement yet, but we're in good shape to receive that. We believe we will receive 100% reimbursement. And so we think we're in, in good shape. It's just a slow process, so we're, we're being very diligent and watching it closely and crossing our Ts and dotting the Is, because, because that's what they, they want.
Yeah. And with all the things that were, that I was talking about, I, I really hope that the staff stays stable and we don't have any more surprises, because it's very difficult in transition from going from one to the other, to the other. And so, and I guess, real quick, with Mark Sturdly, he's in charge of looking at, after the Apohara River project, is he going to have some help on that? Is there somebody on the staff that's going to be able to help him out also?
So in Zone 7, we are filling the Assistant Director position, which will add an additional body in that area to help oversee. Mark is doing a fabulous job. You mentioned, you know, the Apohara River and staying the course and pushing. Mark is the right, the right person for that job. And that assistant position that we hope to fill in the next few months will continue to reinforce that effort.
You're welcome. And thank you very much. Welcome aboard, and looking forward to talking to you more in the future.
Thank you, and thank you for your comments.
Thank you. We'll now open it up for the community. There's an opportunity for members of the community to address this on the Public Works budget item.
Thank you. Becky Steinbrenner, resident of rural Aptos. I also want to welcome Mr. Machado to the county. I think he's a breath of fresh air. And that he has been willing to talk with me about my concerns is really a welcome change. Thank you, Mr. Machado. I just want to mention in the past accomplishments that there was a real debacle with the Vision Recycling and Solid Waste thing. I won't go into it, but that was a travesty and a real debacle, the way that was handled. I want to comment to Supervisor Capet's suggestion, if there's money saved on one project, put it into another. That has already happened. $38,000 from a school safety project in Watsonville was given to the Aptos Village Project mitigations in Aptos Village. So that's already happening. Maybe not to where you think it should go, but that's where it is. I want to register again my, my protest against so much money being spent in the Aptos Village traffic improvement projects that is mitigation for the Aptos Village Project itself. The TIA fees are unrealistically low. There was no multiplier for restaurant use, which has the highest rate of use for new traffic that would have increased TIA fees. There will be four restaurants within the Aptos Village Project. I also want to say that the relocation of the bus stop included in Phase 1 of the Aptos Village Project traffic improvement, improvements, brought unrealistic expense to the public and to the Soquel Creek Water District. They had to spend $75,000 to relocate their water pipes just to move the bus stop. And the purpose of that bus stop is to make a gateway for the Aptos Village Project Parade Street. And to mollify the very upset existing businesses that are going to lose their on-street parking because of that. The application was to, for that new crossing was to have a certificate of indemnification by the developers, and the county did not get that. So that leaves the county open for a possible liability for accidents there, if it happens. The CPUC approval for that new crossing has expired under CPUC law. The county should have applied for extension 30 days before the expiration. There has been no letter to call for an extension, and that is through CPUC records. I want to ask that there be more money spent for maintenance of the Freedom Boulevard Bike Lane. It's overgrown and a very hazardous place right now for cyclists. And to ask for mowing on roadside for fire safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to address this on this budget item? Have you seen anyone bringing back to the board for action? Is there a motion?
Recommended actions for the Public Works?
Second.
A motion from Supervisor Leopold and a second from Supervisor Coonery. Thank you for the presentation. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have our final item for today, which is to approve the 2018-19 proposed budget for the plant acquisition section of the capital projects, including any supplemental budget materials as recommended by the CAO. We have the capital project list for 1819, excuse me, the capital projects proposed budget, the capital projects line item detail, and the plant acquisition project detail. Good afternoon, and welcome, Ms. Lindberg.
Good afternoon, Chair, friend, and members of the board. I'm Betsy Lindberg, Director of Capital Projects and Public Works. And with me is Michael Beaton, Director of General Services. We're here to provide an overview of the capital projects' plant acquisition budget. Representatives from other departments who are performing work funded from the plant acquisition budget are also here, if you have questions. And the focus of this presentation is on the plant acquisition budget. Capital projects does also include infrastructure project budgets, which were just approved as part of the Public Works Department budget. So six funds make up the plant acquisition budget. These are for county facilities, balance of redevelopment funds, and parks. Go ahead. And three major projects were completed this past year. That includes the Roundtree Rehabilitation and Reentry Project. There was a ribbon cutting for that project in May, and the Sheriff's Office is now preparing to accept inmates into the new facility.
We also have the Solar Energy Project, which is pretty much on its final leg, with the Center for Public Justice being the last facility to be switched over from PG&E to solar. I'd also like to acknowledge Carol Johnson, who was recognized by the Clean, as a Clean Air Leader from the Monterey Air District Resource Board. The Ag remodel is also completed. It has, we have finished the punch list, and we plan on bringing an item back to the board here in August for a notice of completion. The identified in the budget for 1819 is about $1.75 million of additional funding for new projects. I know this, the slide says about $2.5 million, but the general fund contribution actually goes right to the capital facilities fund. Notice the dollar amounts are the exact same. So we have about $1.75 million of additional funding for next year. To break down what that $1.75 million is, we have $750,000 identified for current county office buildings. One of them is $75,000 to replace the copper piping for this building for all the restrooms. We're having some failures within our current piping, which is causing some minor leaks. So to replace that copper piping is going to be about $75,000. We also have a weather ceiling project for $225,000, which is for the roof of 701, this building. When we installed the solar panels on top of the roof, we realized we had some roof maintenance that needed to be completed. We also set aside $450,000 for future maintenance needs as they pop up, depending on what we
So this chart highlights park projects. You'll see that the funding sources include park dedication funds and other special park funds and former redevelopment funds. Aptos Park Dedication Funds will be used for playground replacement and accessibility improvements at Hidden Beach Playground. And park staff has shared that they are also working with the community to raise additional funds for repair and maintenance work there. And everyone is looking forward to the new bike pump track at Pinto Lake. And there are some other improvements planned for the coming year as well. And this chart provides an overview of the library projects, which were also touched on in the Public Works Department presentation. So these projects will be constructed over the next three to four years. The Felton Library Project is anticipated to be under construction this fall. Construction of renovation improvements at La Selva Beach, Boulder Creek, and Live Oak Branches will follow in spring of 2019. Construction of the Live Oak Library Annex at Simpkins Swim and Community Center is planned for about two years from now. And the Measure S work will wrap up with the major renovation of the Aptos Library.
So when we think of our capital improvements and we look at our current approach, which has kind of been, for maintenance-wise, has been kind of reactionary. We've been providing minimal preventative maintenance to our current facilities that we have. We've been very strategic as a county with our investments, with limited funding. For example, for our libraries, we were able to do some renovations through our Measure S. Sheriff Roundtree remodel, we were able to accomplish a grant to help us renovate that facility. Solar installation project, we were able to do through a bond and ultimately pay for it through our savings, through our PG&E savings. Probation gym remodel, again... Probation Gym remodel, again, same thing through a grant. So we've been very strategic as a county, trying to source outside funding to help us with our facilities' maintenance needs. But even with that said, we still estimate about $80 million in plant unmet needs in our county. When we look at the future, some of the things that we're going to try to do is to become very proactive and kind of strategic and continue our strategicness with our capital facilities and capital improvements. We're going to start looking at performing asset preservation through facility condition indexing, facilities master planning, related to our future growth of our county, and make sure that we preserve our current assets that we have currently for all county facilities. With that there, that concludes our presentation for capital improvements. We would like to acknowledge the CAO's office, including Trish Daniels, for helping us prepare this presentation for your board, as well as Amy Mio Cuso, I apologize, for her help and work with the proposed capital improvement program plan.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from board members? Supervisor Coonerty.
Sure. Well, one is, I'm happy to see that we have some resources to put through this, but I'm also happy to see that we have two really capable, smart people looking at our resources. I think we haven't treated our county facilities as resources, and I think there's a tremendous opportunity here to both assess them, but then also to think about how we use them in a way that's the most beneficial to taxpayers and to the county. So I'm excited about this effort. I'm excited that you actually got called out for this specific budget hearing and the work that's beginning. So keep it up.
Supervisor Leopold.
Thank you, Chair. I think during the years of the Great Recession, the Board of Supervisors and the CAO's office made a decision that we were going to try to keep as much money on the street and with services to people and defer maintenance on our facilities. And you can only do that for so long. Excuse me. We can only do that for so long. And so I'm glad that with new leadership in the department, that we can start trying to take a look at this and figure out how we do it so we don't have a problem down the line. I really appreciated the work that Ms. Lindberg does on capital projects. I've seen it for many years, first with the Redevelopment Agency and now in her role in Public Works. We count on her to build everything. So thank you for that ongoing work. And Carol Johnson has been a stalwart in the department and does incredible work. And so I'm really grateful to hear that she won an award because she does award-winning work. And I appreciate when I get the chance to work with her, and she's always there when I need her. And so I thank her for that work, and I look forward to continuing to work on these capital improvements. I think, you know, for our CAO, we also have to figure out some long-term strategies about financing this, and that may be something that'll come back as part of an overall financing strategy.
Thank you. Anybody else on this item? Supervisor Caput.
I'd just say, with, you're wearing a different hat. Okay, I'm used to seeing you, you were with the Health and Human Services.
The Health Services Agency, yes.
And then that's changed also, so we got to get used to that. How are you feeling as far as the transition from one to the other?
I'm absolutely loving it. I do miss my Health Services Agency family. I miss my fiscal team, my admin team. I had a great, the Health Services Agency was just a great organization. I am really loving General Services. The staff here, phenomenal. Working with Carol Johnson's been phenomenal, and the support of the CAO's office has been great. So I'm really enjoying it. Thank you.
Right. And Jane Gwen, where is she now? Do we know?
The last I heard from Jane was she was retiring from governmental service. So I know that she's looking for better things in life in retirement. But evidently, she's not going to be.
Boyd.
Because, yeah, we had John Presley move on also and Jane Gwen, so we've had a lot of changes. And they were very good people. Miss them. Thank you. And I'm sure you're going to do a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll open it up for the community. Does anybody actually like to address us on the plant acquisition and capital project budget?
Thank you. Good morning. Becky Steinbrenner, resident of Aptos. I'm really delighted that the county is putting up so many great solar panels. I see them at Simpkins. I see them in many places. What did disturb me was the number of very large trees that were removed. And so I would like to ask, what is the reforestation component of that project? Where will the new trees be planted and how many and what kind? And I want to ask why there are no improvements in your presentation to the Aptos Village Park. That really has nothing. The playground was taken away. I used to go there a lot with my kids, but it was taken away and has since become kind of a dog park and a place for special events. So I'd like something put back in there for the youth that most likely will be coming with as the Aptos Village Project, affordable housing and the good housing that's going in there comes online. Related to that, the Great American Music Festival is gone. They're not coming back to the Aptos Village Park because there is no place to stage their equipment. And I think that's a real loss for the community. So I would like to, again, ask Supervisor Friend that you negotiate, help us negotiate with.
I just want to know what this has to do with capital improvements or project, plant acquisition. I mean, if you could at least quasi-make it that way.
Park acquisition is what I'm talking about.
Okay, it doesn't sound like it so far, so I'm just trying to get it to that.
Okay, all right. Well, please, my time's burning. Let me talk. Park acquisition, I would like to see negotiations as a public-private partnership to acquire at least a portion of Phase 2 for parking and public use. And in finality, I just want to once again protest the use of Measure S funds for the Live Oak Annex, Library Annex. It's a community center, and I think it's going to be really great for the community, but I don't think it's fair to call it a library and use Measure S money with a small collection of books. Thank you very much.
Anybody else from the community who'd like to address this on this item? Okay, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
The recommended actions for the capital projects budget.
We have a motion from Supervisor Leopold and a second from Supervisor Caput. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you for the presentation. We will reconvene tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. here as budget hearings will continue. Thank you for Community TV for covering.